Okay, I'm calling the meeting to order.
No, I'm not, I'm not.
We could all rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, welcome everyone. Yesterday we had, we sort of finished up identifying items to send back, which we were doing last week, and we did again yesterday, items to send back to, or a running list of items to send back to Charter Revision Commission. And so today, and we had public comment yesterday, today we are, we have a draft list that Attorney Mednick sort of was keeping, basically listening to the, to the meetings last week and will, even before last week, I think, and then yesterday. So I think what we're going to do, what would be the most productive way to manage this is to go through the items as you laid them out for consideration to go back and then have discussion, and then vote on each item whether yea or nay to send back. Does that sound agreeable to everyone?
Um, yes.
Oh, I didn't have my thing on, sorry.
Yes, thank you. And then at that time, if I have questions per article, or some additions that I'd like to add to the list, just let me know the best, I mean, I just, where there's a bubble, there is a question, so.
Okay.
But I want to thank you for putting this list together, because I think in many of the instances, you captured my questions and concerns, and I know a lion's share of them were things that I had brought up, so I want to thank you for that.
All right, so let's just start off with Article number one. Do you want to, Attorney Mednick, just go through each, we'll go through that one and discuss.
Happy to. So Article one, particularly 1.4, is the definition provision in the Charter, and we've been asked to look at some specific definitions, boards and commission, board and commission, contract, ordinance, regulation, either adding a definition for vacancy, or just going lowercase on vacancy, and, and the concept of an appointing authority in there. And as well as a general review of the definitions necessary to ensure clarity and consistency, and I can assure you that through the end of this process, until you get it and vote on it finally, we will continue to do that. So it's basically a general review of the definitions with some specific definitions pulled out.
Yes, I thought this was fairly benign, just sending it back, and I think it's smart, good idea.
And I would add that, just to point out that what I like here is it's including but not limited to, so that solves for that.
So if anybody has any continuing concerns about definitions while it's going back and forth, we will, we will do that. The Commission will be happy to work with, obviously with the Board of Selectmen to make sure it works.
Okay.
All right, so we're okay with that.
I'll move this item.
Second.
Um, yes, okay, sorry, I'm just, I want to make sure before I, I'll second the motion.
Okay. Is there any further discussion before we vote to send this back to the CRC?
I just have questions, and perhaps if Attorney Baldwin's on the line, I have questions about some of the preceding language to the resolution. So are we just going to discuss the articles, and should I bring up my question before we vote on the overall motion of the resolution?
Well, this is just a motion on item number one in the resolution.
Right, but do we have to move the, I just want to make sure that in voting it, I'm not also, I just need it confirmed out loud that I'm not also...
If you have a question on the whereas clauses before you vote on the final one, or before you proceed to item number two, it'd be nice to get those resolved in order, so.
Okay.
Since there's a motion on item number one, you probably should vote on that.
Yep, so I second that.
And that does not inhibit your ability to do anything else.
And I, I second that motion.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
No.
All right, all in favor of sending this back to the CRC?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
So I would make a motion to, to remove the where, the third whereas clause. The Board of Select Persons generally accepts the substantial, I, as a, I would like it moved as a point, I'll make, I'll make the motion to remove the clause, whereas the Board of Select Persons generally accepts the substantial content of the draft report favorably.
So are you making a motion?
To, to remove this clause.
The third whereas clause. Can I explain what that generally, what that means? If you don't like the word generally, you might use the word conditionally. The objective here, and I'll explain the remainder of the process, is that you've looked at the Charter, you've come up with the areas that you believe should be recommended, conditionally or generally supporting what's before you doesn't negate your ability at a later stage to disapprove something that's in there. So, so if the word generally bothers you, it's conditional, because the assumption, operating assumption is when you, when you come up with recommendations, is that everything else was okay. And, but it still doesn't bind you from doing anything you want with the rest of the document when it comes back to you from the CRC.
I, it's not the word generally, actually, interestingly, that is getting me stuck. It's the word substantial, because I know it has different meanings, and it's, it's more, I'm happy to generally accept it.
They'll take out the word substantial, yeah.
But I, but there is a motion on the table, so should I, I can remove my motion.
I'll second it for discussion.
Okay. So, again, I'm happy to include a support and, and an acceptance, a general acceptance of it, so it's really for me, because I think it's so subjective, and so I, I would, how do we do this? Do we vote it down, or do I strike the motion, or do I just strike to?
I don't know, can you amend it? I mean, what part don't you like?
It's that word substantial that I'm getting stuck on.
Accepts the substantial content?
Accepts the content of the...
She would delete the term substantial.
I generally accept it.
Yeah, generally.
Yeah, correct, I would keep generally.
So you would say, I generally accept the content of the draft report favorably?
Correct.
So you want to strike the word substantial?
Correct.
All right. All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. Is there any discussion on this item? Of removing the word substantial from the third whereas?
No.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Tom? Tom?
I said aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. Motion carries.
That's okay.
Okay.
The second, I'll wait till you finish writing.
Now, go ahead.
The second item is the point that has been raised before on the definition, this, we're pulling this definition out because it has substantial impact throughout the document of elected town official, and the motion is to have the Commission look at this and consider including the RTM within the definition as an elected town official, and then making modifications throughout the Charter accordingly, so that if the Commission is recommending that they include it in the definition, that it will be deleted where it is separated at the present time. So that's what that section is intended to mean, so that we don't have to look at it every, every time that, you know, if that's agreed, it'll be modified.
Sure, I understand that. So can I get a motion to?
So moved for Article...
Send this, okay, back to the CRC?
Yeah, so moved for Article...
Seconded.
Okay.
For number two.
You want to talk about it?
I do, I do have questions, and it may be that they're more appropriate for under eight. I just want to make sure that some of the discussion, that the CRC has the ability to discuss some of the things that we had brought up previously, maybe it's covered under eight, but the idea that there was language around adding the RTM's ability to have legal counsel, you know, the executive session discussion with public meeting, and again, maybe it was covered in a new draft, but I'm working from...
The public meeting issue is covered.
And then the moderator language around...
That's later on in the items.
That's what I said, I just want to make sure...
The moderator language is back in as an errata.
It was, okay, as I said, I'm working from...
Is there something about moderator later on?
I think they recognize as the...
That the moderator in the minority representation, it's there, but it wasn't, and I think it was an errata, I just wanted to make sure that it had been there.
Yeah, we'll get to it, I'll look at it carefully.
So that's the only discussion I have for that point.
Tom, do you have anything?
I'm good on this one.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, motion carries. All right.
The third item is the issue of, let me just keep track of my notes, is the standards of conduct, this is Section 1.5, you're asking the CRC to review the standards of conduct in order to determine whether these provisions should be ordinances rather than provisions.
I'll make a motion to, I'd like to make a motion to add, to add a line, and please help me articulate this, so that language can be edited or added as seeing fit in case they...
Let's, well, let's make a motion to take the item up, excuse me, wrong pipe. Motion to take the item up, is we need a motion to take the item for discussion.
Seconded.
Item number three. Okay, so now it's open on that floor, go ahead.
So I guess the question is, do we do, because in theory, I do want there to be a review, but in the case, I want the Charter Review Commission to have the ability to add language.
To modify, so right now, it's, right now it's limited to considering that issue, or...
To be binary.
Or otherwise modify the, otherwise modify the provision.
Correct, so do I then make a motion?
Modify, for what?
So let's, let's discuss, yeah, let's discuss this item. So my, my understanding of this was, we already have this in the Charter, standards of conduct, standards of conduct and provisions to be in ordinance, we have this language in the Charter, the RTM has the authority to establish ordinances, so I'm having trouble understanding why, why we have this at all.
And I think that was the initial question, does it move initially to ordinance versus Charter, and that's why I was suggesting it may give us flexibility, or the Commission flexibility, to amend it to either feel more modern, I just didn't want them to be limited in a binary way.
The re...
Can you hear me, this is Town Attorney Jim Baldwin?
Yes. Go ahead, Jim.
So, so the, the language which is proposed in this section is identical, is verbatim to the existing language in the Charter, but if the question is whether or not the, the language can be supplemented or improved in any way by ordinance, the answer is yes. In fact, there is already an ordinance which speaks to the Code of Conduct, but really it just loops back and refers back to the Charter, but that does not extinguish the legislative body, the RTM's right, to add or modify the terms. Have I got that right, Steve?
Yes, you do. But I, but I think that what, what Select Woman Lefkowitz is adding here is that if we wanted to modify the words, right now, the order to the Charter Revision Commission is limited to moving this out of the Charter, and so she wanted to add something to the extent of otherwise modify the provision. We will have to modify this provision, yeah, we will have to, yeah.
It begs the question as to what, you'd have to give the CRC information or an idea as to what aspect of that Charter provision they would like, you would like to have modified.
I think these, I think we're trying to deal with two separate issues. The motion on the table is whether they should be part of the Charter or not. Why don't we deal with that issue, as to whether we believe it should be part of the Charter? And then if there's a secondary issue, which is, assuming it stays in the Charter, do they want to change the language in any way, shape, or form? Happy to take that up in another motion, but I think the key right now to this one as it's written is, should it be part of the Charter?
I think that's accurate in what I'm trying to convey.
So to help me to understand, this, this language is already in our Charter. We're voting on if we should send it back to the Charter Revision Commission to do what? Reestablish it, it's already there?
No, to decide if it should be in there at all.
Modify?
No, at this...
Oh, you mean at all?
Correct.
Oh, I see.
Can I tell you, and again, I don't want to be argumentative or get engaged in debate, but one of the reasons you have provisions like this in a Charter is even though you have enabling legislation to create a Board of Ethics and a Code of Ethics from the state, this is in your Charter because it's harder to change your Charter. You don't have to adopt a Code of Ethics, because you are given the ability to do it by the legislature. This provision in your Charter says you do. If you take it out of the Charter, there's no mandate, except for the goodwill of people to keep the ordinance on the books. That's why you have, presumably that's why this provision was in the Charter in the first instance.
Given the state of the times with government, and given some of the things that the town has dealt with in the past number of years, I can't see any good reason for even debating whether this should be part of the Charter or not.
Right, I agree with you.
And most distributively, it should be part of a Charter if it just states that we value this Code of Conduct by our elected officials in any way, shape, or form. There's no harm in putting it there, I think it says a lot about us as a community, and in my opinion, we, it should stay there. If there's specific wording changes, or, or requests for additions, or, or that, happy to have that discussion, but in my view, it's a separate issue as to whether it should be part of the Charter.
And, and I would, I feel that way too. I feel that it's there, but I would like them, I personally would like the CRC, and I would say the same is going to be true for this, for the rules of order and civility, these are good things to, to talk about and to have, but I would like the ability to modify the language. But I agree, it's a separate discussion about should it be and shouldn't, shouldn't it be, and I think we all agree it should be, but...
But the Commission's going to need some guidance on what you want to modify. What are the concerns you have about the language that they should look at, otherwise they're operating in a vacuum?
It was brought up, I think it's just an area to like, evaluate through a lens of sustainability or equity, I'm just saying for instance, I don't know that that's the case.
Well, that's not, I mean, we, we need to be way more specific than that.
We would, I think...
They only have 30 days, we have 26 items, so I think we need to be extraordinarily specific, so we're in the Charter now, I'm sorry, is it, can you read what we have actually in the Charter, what it says in this regard?
I, may I make it? Okay.
It's Article 11, 11.1, it's virtually identical, the only, well, actually, it is identical, because the, the RTM members are pulled out in the current Charter because they're not town officials.
Okay.
I thought, in fact, I, I was looking at, so we'll have to clean this up, at the very least, if we move them into the town official category. Nothing changed, except for definitional things that changed, we, I don't think we made any, any...
So wait, what does it say?
What's along, you want me to read the whole thing? It's a long...
That's the whole thing?
Well, it starts here, page 11, it's 11.1 up to 12.1, 11.5. It's identical to what is in this draft document.
Okay, so you have that page, Nancy?
It's the Declaration of Policy, it defines what a conflict of interest is.
I'm just saying, if we are too specific, then the CRC is tied, and they cannot address it at all. They, it means they cannot change language, and I, and I'm saying it's been brought up as something that is an area where we could look at possibly making it more current, more inclusive, more modern. So that is my interest in, for both the standards of conduct, not because, and again, I recognize that for the CRC to have guidance, they will need more specifics, but if we don't put it on this list, it can't be discussed at all around the CRC table. It could be 10 minutes, but we cannot do it if it's not on our list.
If, if I may, this is Jim Baldwin again, I, I understand, I think, Nancy, what you're talking about, but at this stage, I think that you do have to be, the Board does have to be more specific about the direction, giving direction to the CRC. You can't just wholesale give the whole document back to them, or whole sections back to them and say, just look at it again. And, and Steve, please correct me if I'm wrong, but that, that's, we're beyond that point, this is the point where the Board has looked at the proposed Charter Revision document, and has specific questions for specific issues or items that it wants addressed, but to just give a blanket, let's send it back to them, is non-specific, non-directional, and, and really, is, is, doesn't serve the purpose of what is this meeting today, where you're supposed to vote on those items, to go back to the CRC for a specific review and consideration.
I have...
And I also want to add, I also want to add that if you were to change this section, I believe there's reference to the, the Ethics Commission, and it, it could throw a wrench into the Ethics Commission's purview and, and authority to review matters that are brought before it, which are in large part based upon this part of the Charter. A couple things, I'm sorry, Nancy, I didn't mean to cut you off, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm simply suggesting there are two items...
Steve, can I see the piece, can I see that?
There are two items here already for review, and to me, that, to review it is, and to not be able to act in any other way except binary, yes or no, does not give the CRC enough, or us enough flexibility. So I'm not asking for broad sections, I'm asking for specific clauses within an article to simply have the ability, should they need it, should the CRC need it, to add or edit language, because as it's written, it just says review.
And Nancy, a couple things. Number one, I think that point three is whether they should be in the Charter or not, as we discussed. Number four, because you specifically mentioned diversity, equity, inclusion, I think it's actually covered in number four to make sure that we have something on there related to the rules of order and civility. So I think at least we've covered that, if, if, I'm interpreting, that's part of your concerns. So I think our standards of conduct are consistent with what we've always had, I think if I'm correct, Attorney Mednick, we've moved them in the document to show their importance to the, to the community, and then I think we've added this section of rules and order and civility, and I think there's language to be addressed here as to including at least some aspect of diversity within that. So I think we've actually covered that, if we do that.
Except...
That would be the way I would say it.
What I would say is, I, I can appreciate that and stand behind what you're saying for number three on this list, but with four, where it just says review, it does not give any ability to add or change language.
Well, I think it, I think that is...
I think implicit...
I took it, you might be right, I took it as if that's implied.
I mean, to me, I just read that, it's just standard information about conflicts of interest, you know, financial disclosures, I mean, things that are typical, normal things that you expect a public official to abide by.
And, and under the, and under the statutes, you have the ability to adopt ordinances. So in fact, I thought, the only thing I saw missing was that language, but you don't need the language in the Charter, because the statutes give you that language to be able to adopt ordinances.
Right, and that is standard stuff, I mean, that's standard, when, when I was a state representative, where you have to sign disclosure agreement, same Code of Ethics stuff, but...
This is, yeah.
I mean, Nancy, if you want the RTM to take up an ordinance that adds to the Charter regarding specific language that you're, be, or thinking about, which I don't know exactly what it is, but I, I have to agree with Town Attorney, I mean, that's standard language about ethics and codes of conduct, and I, I just don't think that the, at this late stage, that they're going to pull apart this entire thing, check state statutes, see if they're inserting things properly, and not screwing with the actual intent of that piece of the Charter, which is conduct and ethics.
And as I said, I think with Article three, I can appreciate that, so that, since that's the article we're on, in the interest of time, I'm happy to end the discussion on that.
Okay.
I'm going to hope in the, in Article four, because I hear the direction that the conversation is going in terms of intention, I'm going to hope that with review, it will be able to encompass perhaps, and again, I would need to spend time with, when I spend time with the CRC talking this through, because it is here for review if it passes, so.
So we're on Article...
I have no more discussion on three.
We're on Article three. So my, my, I know we have a motion and a second, we're on the floor for debate, my inclination is to not send this back to the CRC, to leave it the way it is in the Charter. Is there any discussion, further discussion?
I would, again, err on the side of more is appropriate, but I'm, it's, I would go where the majority on this one, I mean, I will vote the way I do, but I, I'm inclined to say otherwise, to keep it.
So I, I just want to be clear that I, I think you can, you can work with the RTM on any kind of ordinances or language stuff, but I, I just, I don't want, first of all, they have a tight timeline, there's some big stuff that's headed back their way, and this is an important piece, I, I just don't want to mess with something we've had in our Charter that regarding conduct and, and ethics.
And, and so, a point well taken, if you take a look at the Ethics Commission section at the end of the Board and Commission section, it clearly talks about an ordinance, and so the issue of ordnance, it's 8.15 at the end of the document, page 75, the one I handed out today, or sent out today, 8.15, it, it does talk about receiving complaints, this is in B1, that they have the ability to receive complaints alleging violations of the standards of conduct, or any ordinance establishing a Code of Ethics for town officials. Because I, as I was looking at, I thought the only thing I would do is add the ability, this may be supplemented by ordinance, but it's stated already in another provision in the Charter, so that would be my concern.
I, I can see your point, it's, it's, it's fine.
So are we, so I'm, I'm, so we have a motion, and...
To keep it in.
Second, to not send this, I'm going to make, we have a motion to discuss, so I'm going to make a motion to remove this from sending it back to the Charter Revision Commission, to not send this.
Can't we just vote, can't we just vote no, and then it doesn't go back?
Yes, yes, that's appropriate.
That's correct.
Okay, sorry, okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Not, not in favor, anybody in favor?
I'm going to vote no.
Okay, and no, myself as well?
Can I ask a question in terms of...
No for me.
Can I?
No for me.
Ask a question in terms of process, does it mean that every item on the list, the CRC is obligated to...
Review.
Okay, so I just want to sort of state for the record that, to me, I'd rather, to your point, there are other bigger issues for me that are of import, and so I'm trying to be mindful of that.
And maybe this is a good time for me to state what I stated this morning, when I sent the latest version of the resolution out to the three of you, and that is, that in this next phase, once you send this back to the Charter Revision Commission, the Charter Revision, the first meeting that they have will be a conferral meeting, where usually the head of the appointing authority comes, but I would strongly recommend that Select Woman Lefkowitz be there, because a number of these items that are going there are generated by you, and that's an opportunity to explain to them what you are thinking about, what your objectives are, and what you're looking for. And the important thing is that during that process, we need to have a dialogue between the Commission and the Board of Selectmen on any language, if they choose to draft language, that may be coming back, because you don't in this process have the ability to amend the language when it comes back to you. It's either an up or down vote on the language that they are coming up with, so it's really critical in this last phase that there be a dialogue. So it's really critical, in this last phase, that there be a dialogue, and that people be available for discussion, for meetings, telephone calls, responses.
Agreed.
Yeah. So I just wanted to explain, that's where we're going.
And understood, and as I had said in response, that's why I would urge to be part of that scheduling discussion, because I know it is important for me to be able to articulate and advocate for some of the changes here.
I know that they've done some, we had a poll that went out the other day, so-
I think you can talk.
Yeah. We'll figure it out.
The chairman's not here, so.
Yeah, so we'll work on that.
And is it up or down omnibus, or?
No, in whole or in part. Well, yeah, in whole or in part.
All right.
So item number four, I'll continue with the numbers, even though this is now going to be number three.
Yes.
Item number four, generally, please review 1.6, which is the rules of order and civility. 1.7, on open meetings and public records, I have the concept here for redundancy. I think one of the points that was made by Selectwoman Lefkowitz is that this is repeated throughout the document, and that's why I do have the reference to 3.4 in here as well. So to make sure that we have this concept in here, and that we also make it clear that the open meeting concept doesn't violate state statute, that there is an ability to have executive sessions. And so, I believe that is, and then three, to add to this, or have, review the concept of a diversity, equity, and inclusion standard. I believe that, this is my language based on what I heard you say, is whether a standard of townwide, you know, whether a standard of townwide application can be developed and placed in this section for DEI. Is that correct?
Yes, and does that imply that then, even though it's not specifically stated, that language can change?
Well, if you, if-
In the Charter?
Once you put the language in the Charter, you can't change it without a Charter Revision.
Meaning, the CRC, when they review all of this, is it implied that there can be some changes to it?
Yeah. When it's talk about review, for example, if we find that there's redundancy, the Commission will clearly resolve and modify language. And in the case of establishing a standard, the concept of the standard for DEI is similar to the other townwide standards that have been established in this section. So that would be the concept, yes.
Can I make a motion to approve Article Number Four, Item Four?
Second.
Article One, Item Four, or Article Four, Item-
We're on Article-
We're Article One, generally, right now. Okay. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Item Number Four.
Item Number Four.
I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion. Tom, do you have anything?
What's the question on this? Just whether we're going to vote up or down on Item Number Four?
Yes. Right?
Unless you have some modification to it in any way?
Should.
No, I'm good on this one. It's a definition.
Okay, so we're-
I'm good on it.
Okay. We're sending this back to the CRC.
That's the vote on the table, right? Yep.
Okay.
I have no questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The next item, and I'll make it very clear for our record, Item Number Five on the resolution, Article One, Section 1.6.1. This is actually, came from me, and I'm recommending that we make sure in this section, which talks about rules, that the RTM has the ability to adopt its own rules, which supersede Robert's rules. I recognize that at the present time, they do have rules, but I wanted to make sure this section is not read in any way to preclude them from adopting their own rules, where Robert's rules would be supplemental, but Robert's rules would not be their rules necessarily.
So I'm going to make a motion to take this up as an item for discussion.
I'll second it.
Second it.
So I want to ask a question. The, I was on the RTM, the RTM has rules to regulate. So why are we, why are we doing this?
Because the provision we have here in the Charter, as Robert's rules shows, a general rule, I guess maybe that, regulate the conduct of all meetings of the RTM and the elected boards and commissions of the town unless the RTM, we don't need this. The language is already in the Charter.
It is.
Yeah.
They have rules to regulate.
No, it says unless the RTM or particular board otherwise specifies. The language is already there. Okay.
So this is redundant?
This is redundant. This could go away.
I make a motion that we vote on this one.
Yeah, we have a motion in a second already.
We just voted down. Just vote no if you're not in favor.
Yeah.
It's a call of the law. Yeah.
All in favor? Opposed?
Opposed.
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 No extensions, motion fails. Item's taken out.
Okay. Item Number Six, Article Two, Seven, and Eight. This is just broad language, asking the Commission to consider reformatting the current charts for readability and consistency. In the present Charter, you have these charts. They were eliminated from this draft. This is simply asking the Commission to reconsider placing them in the document.
I'll make a motion to accept Item Number Six. Second.
Second it.
Okay.
So this is just, this is just basically formatting.
Yep. Organizing.
And Attorney Mendick, does this include the ability to add a table of contents, should the CRC so choose?
I think you have that ability. We could put that in here, but I'm not sure the Commission will have an opportunity to do it, but that's an editing decision that you can make afterwards, so.
It doesn't need to be modified by-
I don't believe so.
The contents would change the-
You're talking about an index. We have a table, an index.
An index, right.
Yeah. Yeah. You could always make it, yeah.
I don't need to include it.
I don't think it would violate.
We should make lawyers do that.
Yeah.
The plan is to have an index.
Sorry?
It's a good idea. The plan is to have an index, and we've already started crafting one, but obviously, it makes sense to wait until you have the final document. But that is going to be part of the new Charter, which has never existed previously, but upon good suggestions from the public, due to Ewing in particular, it's, there's no reason with today's technology why we shouldn't do that.
Yep.
I agree.
I have no further questions.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
The next item is Article Two, it's Item Number Seven. Article Two, Section 2.3A1 and Two, and Section 2.3C1A and B, and throughout the Charter. I believe at the beginning of those sections, when we were drafting, I separated the first select person as a town official from the Board of Selectpersons, and this is asking the CRC to review the necessity of separating the first select person from the Board of Selectpersons throughout the Charter.
I can, I'll move to, I'll move Item Seven.
I second it.
Okay. Discussion?
The way I'm, the way I'm reading this is, this is a drafting issue, and the goal here is to get rid of those changes and put it back to referring to the Board of Selectmen. Is that Board of Select People? Is that correct?
Mm-hmm.
That's correct.
Yes.
Yeah. I'm good with this.
Okay. Yes? Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next item?
The next item is Item Number Eight. This is Article Two, Section 2.3B and C, One C, and Article Three, Section 3.2A1C. And anywhere else it might be, I think those are all the sections where it's raised. This is the issue pertaining to the number of RTM members.
Sorry, let me just pull this up.
Item Number Eight.
Article Two.
I'll, I'll put this motion on the table.
I'll second it.
Okay.
For discussion.
Thank you.
There was a lot of discussion, may, may.
Yep, sure.
And again, I know this is, okay, this is to the number specifically. In putting this vote back, or putting this item back to the Charter Review, there was a lot of discussion around the number, and changing that thirty, from forty to thirty. How specific do we need to be here?
I think the record is clear what the disparity is. This just simply says, "Review the issue pertaining to the number of RTM members." So again, as I indicated before, you're going to come before the body, you're going to come before the CRC, and different members will have different views on what the number should be, or no view on what the number should be. This is simply saying they should take a look at it. So from my perspective, my assumption would be that you would be arguing to retain the current forty. And the Commission would hear that, and the Commission would do its due diligence and make a decision on the basis of that, and whatever public comment sessions, they're not required to have a public hearing, but knowing this Commission, they will have public comment sessions throughout their, although, don't throw anything at me if you're not planning on it, but my expectation is that they will be doing public comment during this period of time. So it really would maximize flexibility, again, to see whether they can either come up with a settlement in terms of a number that everybody can agree on, or they're going to come back and hold firm on their number, or whatever.
So this, basically, voting for this would just be sending it back for them to review again. Obviously, this has been an issue that's been discussed a lot, I think. You know, the CRC discussed it at length, from the very beginning. You know, they went through a whole process of looking at different forms of government for our town, and wanting to reduce the number even further, to have a more intimate legislative and give more power to the legislative body, and that, that was met with a lot of opposition. It seemed like any change to our form of government was met with a lot of opposition. Land of steady habits. Anyway, I think, listen, for the simple fact that there's been such consternation, we should send it back for a bit more discussion. And then I think each of us, as select people, can weigh in with our thoughts to the Commission. I have, have weighed in, thinking we do need a smaller legislative body. I think it's, I just think smaller is better, more collaborative, and, but again, I think it's important for a lot, some, a lot of people for it to go back. So is, I'm going to open it up to the board for discussion?
Yeah, I'm just looking at the, I wanted to look at the original language. I think that there was so much public support for keeping it the forty, that I'm trying to be mindful and thoughtful about that, and then my own feeling of not, not, or my own summation that, sorry, there wasn't enough analysis provided to warrant or justify the change. And so, where I'm just getting stuck is, I want the number to go back, because I don't like it as proposed, but I'm, where I'm getting stuck on voting specifically for this is around reverting it to the, to the original language and taking out thirty as, as a recommendation.
Well, I think that that's us, I think, send it, because I think there's differences of opinion on this, and I think it should be sent back. I actually argue that they did a tremendous amount of research, and there is documented data that we are an outlier with even the form of an RTM in a state our size. There's five towns that have it. Most towns have a town council, or a city council. But I think it's worth having them take another look at it, and then have it come back to the board for discussion. I mean, you could make a lot of arguments about data. We have a Board of Education that manages over sixty percent of the town's budget that has nine members. We have Planning and Zoning that manage all of our, and make big decisions about how our town is, is developed, and that's seven members. So I think there's, you know, there's arguments on both sides of this, but I think it's worth, I don't want to send some concrete thing back to the Commission. I think asking them to review it again, maybe they might come back with seven or nine. Ooh, everybody's hammer come on fire. Anyway, what do you think? I'm just looking-
I think-
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, it's Tom. Yeah, no, thanks. So I'd like to thank the Commission for all the hard work and effort that's gone into the entire Charter, as well as this particular issue, as well as looking into the form of government. I'd like to thank Ms. Saikono and Mr. Wynn for their documents back to a comment that I made in an earlier meeting, trying to talk about their personal rationale for their recommendation. I do support sending this back for the Commission, for further study, and really to look at what the pros and cons are of the thirty versus forty, because right now, that's what, that is what is before us. And as a Commission, I'd like to hear why they reached the decision that thirty would be more appropriate for our town than forty. Not that it was part of some compromise or something like that, but why is that the right decision? I will go on the record here, and I might be in conflict, was in conflict with some of my colleagues, but I am more of a traditionalist here, and I do appreciate having worked in this form of government for seventeen years. I appreciate the inefficiencies that are inherent in a form of government that has segregation of duties. And while I think we could be more efficient in the way that we do our work, and more collaborative in the way we work together, I am not surprised and thankful that we're maintaining this form of government for the time being. That being said, looking at the size of the RTM is a very real and very honest conversation, and there's going to be differences of opinion. And I think seeing that pros and cons, and seeing what they really think the reason for that, is very appropriate. The one other topic that doesn't come up is, and again, I think I admitted in an earlier meeting, that I was, it never dawned on me, really, that the RTM actually typically gets to vote on its own size, and I actually don't like that provision. I think that that, the size of the RTM should be voted on when an RTM, or rather, when a Charter is revised. I think that should be stipulated, as opposed to left up to the body itself. That's just my personal opinion, but I would like to thank everybody again, and sending this back without malice for further discussion and an analysis. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Tom. Nancy?
Yeah, I would say that I think the article, the recommendation as written allows for further discussion, which I do think is warranted, obviously, and people should absolutely call in and weigh in. I'm not going to oppose it. However, for me, I would be more comfortable, if I were in charge, and I could wave a magic wand, I would change it to read that I'd want it to, you know, I'd even consider capping it at forty, but to go back to the original language with that slight change. But for the purposes of today, I will be supporting this. Because I think the language is written in a loose enough way that public, if there's the right, you know, with public support and the discussions at the CRC, that that will prevail, the predominating feeling will prevail.
So I think the board has weighed in on this, as is, to send back to the CRC. I'm going to ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Can I ask a question, though, as it pertains to RTM, in case there isn't an opportunity to discuss? One of the things, as I said earlier, is it covered, and you may be repeating yourself, but is there the opportunity to cover so that language is considered around the ability for the RTM to have legal counsel and the public meeting concept of the executive, or the ability to have executive session?
The public meeting, the public meeting issue is addressed in an earlier recommendation. The legal issue was not addressed.
Attorney Baldwin, do you want to?
No, that's an accurate statement. That's, I would just say what Steve just said.
Right. I thought you had a discussion with some RTM members up last week, Selectwoman Lefkowitz, when you had your marathon, as Nancy called them, sessions, with Mr. Scheinberg and, I believe, Jill Vigara, regarding the RTM- regarding the RTM, regarding the town attorney having the ability to, if the RTM is writing an ordinance and needs help with an ordinance from an attorney, that, obviously, the town attorney, that's the way, when I was on the RTM, it always was handled. We had a lot of attorneys on the RTM when I was on it, and we would huddle up and work on our own ordinance, and then pass it by the town attorney, have him take another look, and, you know, look at the charter, make sure it wasn't violating charter, and stuff like that. And I believe, Mr. Baldwin, you said that, you shared that information with the group, that you could, obviously, would help them with any kind of ordinances they're working on, or you could appoint an attorney to assist them. Is that what you told me? Am I?
Yeah, that's essentially correct. So, that someone has to be in charge, and that comes, that goes to the town attorney. But obviously, if, let's say, it was an area that was very specific, or one that I didn't feel I had the personal bandwidth to handle, then in that instance, like so many others, because I certainly can't do all legal matters for the town, and I don't, I would do as I do in other situations, and find somebody acceptable to the RTM to help them craft that language. That situation has not arisen yet, but in the event that did happen, that would be the way it would occur, vis-à-vis having their own separate legal counsel, which I think is the topic that was originally discussed. And that is, I think, contrary to the purpose of having a single office of town attorney, and somebody who is in charge of that so-called department.
I think, given that we've discussed some of the concerns around the town attorney, as, I'm putting this in quotes, "political appointment", and the RT, sometimes there is a perceived conflict of interest, even if it doesn't exist in reality. And having the RTM have an ability to hire its own counsel in those instances may be warranted. Just a thought. So, I don't know if that's something I could make a motion, or under how that would work, but it is certainly something we did spend time talking about.
So, I would say.
It is.
I would say that, you know, again, I served on the RTM from '99 to 2003. I served under a Republican and a Democrat. No one has ever asked to have their own attorney for the RTM, in my knowledge, and I've been involved a long, long time. I think that the town attorney is very helpful, and always responsive to any elected official in our town, our department head, so on and so forth. To my knowledge, I don't know that the RTM has worked to write any ordinance, except for just recently. I know there's one RTM member who is working on an ordinance regarding dogs and sheltering, and there's another currently that the town attorney assisted with, from Representative Vigara. So, I don't see, I see more problem with this, political problems with this in the future, than, you know, perceived, perceptions are not always reality. And I don't think, we've had, ever have asked for this in the past, and I don't think this is something we should be putting in the charter. And this was not anything that the charter revision looked at. This is a big issue, and again, I think this kind of falls within the line of big issues with a short timeframe that the Charter Revision Commission is tasked with reviewing and sending back items.
All right, so then.
If I may, if I may make two comments. One, actually, the CRC did look at this issue, and it was brought up in discussions.
Okay.
And they considered it, and they did not think that, for many of the reasons you just articulated, that it was a good idea. The second thing is more procedural, and that is that if you're going to have this discussion, Selectwoman Lefkowitz, if you care to have this discussion, and it's perfectly appropriate to do so, I think it would be correct to have a motion made, so that you can have that discussion, just from a parliamentary appropriateness.
I move to consider, I move to add an item to recommend to the CRC, that the RTM.
You want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'm moving to make a motion. I'm making a motion. To make a recommendation to the CRC, to, I mean, to revisit, to create language. I mean, someone help me here, the lawyer's in the room. To consider adding the RTM to have an ability to hire an attorney, outside counsel. I am sure there is a more eloquent way to say that.
Review the role of RTM to hire outside counsel.
Thank you. Okay, then.
So, that was a motion?
That was a motion.
I do not believe the motion has a second.
We got that. The dead air. Explained it, Mr. Flynn.
Well, I'm just kidding, because nobody was saying anything.
No, it was noted.
I apologize for asking the question.
Thanks, Attorney Mednick.
Item number nine is Article II, Section 2.6. D. And this is dealing with the method of filling vacancies on the Board of Select Persons.
Sorry, did, can you just remind me, did we vote on, ultimately, on eight?
Yes.
We did?
Yes.
We sent out them.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, this is the issue, please, please review the issue of filling a vacancy on the Board of Select Persons. I don't have any additional info, that's the way it was expressed.
So, I'm going to make a motion to take this item up.
I'll second it.
So, I know this was brought up to, I think the CRC talked about this, obviously, what happened in the past, when we had that big issue. And I think several people thought we should have a more strict process or something in the charter to address this. Attorney Baldwin, do you want to?
Yes, I'd be happy to comment on this issue. It's a recommendation that came out of my discussions with Nancy and others, and I think that it's an excellent idea for the CRC to consider the vacancy issues with the Board of Selectmen, especially in light of the changeover from a four-year term to a two-year, from a two-year term to a four-year term. It had consequences, consequences which I think were unintended, that we can hopefully avoid in the future with some modifications of this language. So, I would, I would recommend this.
Okay.
I'm fine with this.
Yeah, but this was not changed. This is current language that you want the commission to look at.
Right, to have some process in place.
Okay.
Which would, which would mean the addition of language. So, as long as this recommendation, thank you.
Yeah, it's, review the issue of filling in the presumption. Let me tell you, the presumption on everything here is that you're looking for language from the CRC. There's nothing else that they have to do.
Okay.
Unless they don't want to give you language.
Right.
Well, I think this is yet.
Yeah, got you.
I just want to make sure, for the record.
I don't think it's that complicated, this one.
Yep.
No, no.
We, you know, we saw what happened, and.
Yep.
Okay.
All right, so, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to add.
A minute. Thank you, Tom. Sorry, that motion carries unanimously.
Dubtailing, I'd like to make a motion to add, in between, apropos of what Attorney Baldwin just mentioned, I'd like to make a motion to add to the recommendations to the CRC, to look at the terms of the Board of Selectmen. That was one of, to look at the terms of the Board of Selectmen. I can explain why, if anyone moves it for discussion purposes.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
Making a motion to add to the list of recommendations the terms of the Board of Selectmen, in terms of.
Term of office, yeah.
Term of office. As well as, as well as the number of members. No, I'm adding it.
But it's not in our charter?
It is. It was changed, as Attorney Baldwin pointed out.
Oh, oh.
It's not an issue that was addressed.
Since 2006, at the last, at the last charter reform, it was changed. The term was changed, but nothing has been changed by the CRC in this document, with respect to the terms.
The motion is to look at both the terms of office and the number of members.
So, you're making a motion to have the Charter Revision Commission look at this specific item for language to include in the charter?
Not for language to include, for, to review the terms, and to discuss an increase from two to five members.
From two to five members?
Three, three to five.
Three to five.
Well, that's a huge change. I don't think the, I mean, that's something big to add to sending back for 30-day.
If you move the item and vote it down, we can discuss, and I can tell you why.
Hint, hint. All right, I'm going to second it, Nancy. Go.
Thank you. I thought, in light of what Attorney Baldwin just said, that, because, again, it's my understanding that they can't, the CRC can't discuss unless we, and I wanted to discuss it in the context of, since that was one of the substantive changes from 2006, to look at it for possible analysis, as it might be helpful in our, in the RTM, in the form of government, to analyze what that change did. And I think it would be helpful in terms of other metrics and how we look at things. I recognize it's a big ticket. I just think it might be helpful in terms of analysis and data.
I think it's a huge ticket item, and I think, you know, there are discussion about eliminating the Board of Selectmen originally, and reducing the size of legislative body, and all of that. And now, you know, this, you're talking about, again, a change of our form of government, which currently, regardless of the recommendation to change from 40 to 30 on the RTM, our form of government has not changed under this charter. And I think it's, I think it's way too much to ask of the CRC, who has been working since September, and we are now on item, going on to item number 10 of 27, or 26 items to send, or I think we just added one, so, and with a short timeframe. So, I'm going to, I'm going to say I would not support this.
So, I'm not going to support it either, and I'll say for the same, you know, I don't know what the pros or cons are going from three to five. I don't know the rationale. This was looked at. I actually think that the four-year term has worked pretty well in the last number of years since that was put in. I was part of the government when it was two years, which was too short. So, I think four years has done pretty well for the Board of Selectmen. No one's explained to me why increasing the membership of the Board of Selectmen would be appropriate, so I can't talk to that. So, I'm comfortable with where it is. So, I won't support it going forward, but I thank you for bringing it up.
And again, it was more in the context of the conversation in terms of analysis and evaluation. And again, the change happened in 2006. I understand there isn't support for it. I just thought it perhaps productive in the context of discussing RTM and other things, and the town administrative position. But, okay, understood. So.
All right, so, we do have a motion and a second. So, all in favor?
No.
All opposed?
None.
And for the record, I'm in favor.
All right, so, one in favor, two opposed. The motion fails.
The next item should not be controversial. It's the defining the role of the parliamentarian. Can I just, oops, I'm sorry. I apologize, the mic.
So, let me, can we just first say, motion, to put that on the floor?
Yeah, this is article, let me just say for the record, it's Article III, Section 3.3G.
Can I interrupt just for a second? Jennifer just texted me, that there, the resolutions that we're looking at is posted online, under Board of Selectmen packets, on the CRC webpages, just for anybody who wants to see it.
Right. So, this is 3.3G. This is, please review the role, the issue of defining the role of the parliamentarian.
Right. Make a motion?
Yeah, we have a motion, right, on the floor?
We didn't move it.
Oh, a motion on the floor to discuss?
I'll make the motion to move item, item 10.
So, I have to say, when I was reviewing this.
You need to second this.
Oh, I thought. Tom, are you seconding?
Seconded.
Thank you. I don't know why this is here. It doesn't make sense to me.
I think it was there in the context of, like, what it was, and did it need it? I don't, I'm not compelled, I don't feel strongly. It was just, it came up for discussion.
Want to talk about it?
I didn't put it on the list. We just put it in the charter.
Oh, I mean, Attorney Baldwin, do you have anything about this?
I, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting, that it's rather straightforward, and it's at the complete discretion of the moderator as to whether he or she wants to appoint a parliamentarian. And it's just stating what is already within their right and authority to do, and in a sense, encouraging, perhaps, that the moderator might take that step for the sake of the meetings of the RTM. But it's completely within their discretion, so I think it's a good addition, but I don't think that you need to define what a parliamentarian is, because the role can be defined by the moderator.
The one thing that we did talk about was, with limited or no resources assigned to the RTM, is it understood that this is a budget, not a budget item? Where does that money come? Is it a paid position, is it not? And I think just clarity was required, since there was some sensitivity around the fact that the RTM doesn't have resources, for instance, to hire outside counsel. So, I think it was in the context of that.
Yeah, and I appreciate that comment, because I'm not looking at it right now, but perhaps the point being made is that it's to appoint a parliamentarian among its members.
Right.
It could be among their members, absolutely.
Did they used to appoint, was Carl Dickman considered the parliamentarian when they used to make, he used to do the parliamentarian? Yeah, he was like the de facto. And then, I think Jeff Steele took it up to teach the rules to regulate, red light, green light, which was actually, we miss that now.
His chart.
Yeah, his chart. I have it. We need, we need a new parliamentarian to teach the RTM rules.
So, maybe you want to send it back to have us add the words amongst its members. So, here, right now, the language is to please review, and based on what you've been suggesting, that that would, the CRC would be enabled to add that language for our review, so.
Yeah.
Bye. I have no further.
Mm-hmm. Is that good? Everybody good with that?
I'm good.
Okay, so, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Next item.
The next item is 3.6. This is in the, I apologize, let me go slow. Article III, 3.6B. This is a pretty simple issue, and B, it should actually be three. This is the timeframe for holding the referenda. The charter, this is current language in our referenda section that we moved into the RTM section of the document. Starts your referenda at 12:00, ending at 8:00. My understanding is you tend to follow state rules, 6:00 in the morning till 8:00 at night, and this is simply asking the commission to look at it, and in all probability would be, the polls shall be open in accordance with the general statutes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
I'll move item number 11.
Second.
I'll second it.
And I would, would love to add that, just for point of discussion, if I may.
Yeah.
That this is an opportunity for us to add a line that is more inclusive for the entire community, to create a larger window of time where people can get to the polls. So, I appreciate that it's state statute, perhaps, but that was the intention of, initially, when I brought it up.
Yeah, it's good. Good to have.
Excellent.
I have no further comments.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Awesome. Motion carries.
Item number 12, it's actually made up of.
Sorry, I have something in Article III to add.
Where?
It's, I'd like to make a motion to add. It's, I'd like to make a motion to add a review, and this came up in conversations with Attorney Baldwin during one of our working sessions, a review of the reapportion of voting districts. I can't tell you the specifics of, around this table right now, so I'll make a motion to add a review of the reapportion of voting districts. For CRC review.
I'll, I'll, I'll second it just to get an understanding of what you're talking about, because I don't understand it.
Yes, I think that there was, I'm sorry.
This is Section three point two A, two of the charter. Am I correct on that? Is that what you're looking at?
Mr. Baldwin, do you have the specifics on this? Because I think Selectwoman Lefkowitz referenced you in a conversation you guys had.
I am looking at my notes. I recall a general conversation, but confess that I don't see it in my notes, but, uh.
Would you like me to step in here?
Yeah. Oh, please, this is, this is your motion, so please do.
Sorry, Tom, I, I, just basically what happened was the conversation was around some of the conflict at the, at the RTM table, at the RTM level, and some confusion around interpretation of charter. Was one of the, um, was, was one of the things that people had pointed to in, in my recollection, and we, at the time, around the table, my table, Attorney Baldwin, we talked about this being an orange box issue, given that was our system, as something to have the CRC look at. It may have prevented some of the confusion and discussion, perhaps, at the RTM level. I don't know, I wasn't part of those conversations.
Yeah, I, I, I'm well aware of the, the conflict they've had, and I think they've had it a couple of times. Not just this time, but I seem to recall similar issues last time they did it. I just don't know, I mean, if, if we could add clarity to it and help them out through the charter, that'd be great. I just don't know what we're asking them to do, really.
Yeah, I don't either.
If I may, I, I think the issue comes down to the fact that there is to be a, a committee composed of an equal number of members from each party, which can cause, uh, you know, a logjam. In other words, i- if, if that committee is unable to reach an agreement, the consequence is that nothing happens and statutory deadlines can be met. And, and I don't mean to put words or thoughts in your, in your mouth, Nancy, or your head, but is, is that where we're going here, or where you're going? In other words, some sort of tiebreaker system to, to correct that possible scenario, which actually the town has experienced in the past?
I would offer that it, it, there's a moment to provide clarity, as Selectman Flynn suggests, and I would, at that point, love to hear from the RTM members at the CRC level for engagement to, to, to see, you know, to be, to be part of those discussions. Because again, clarity might help conflict. No, I, I understand, but I think it was Commissioner Iacono saying it was discussed, and I'm just responding that I understand that, but I think that there's still some confusion about interpretation. And so since it is an item that was brought up, I think it worthy of evaluating again and allowing the RTM with its, not, with the knowledge that they have now, members of the RTM to weigh in, given people are more aware of the process and have gone through this months-long period.
Other than, other than adjusting the fact that it's equal numbers, I don't understand what you would recommend. And I actually am, though it, it creates conflict, I actually think the equal numbers on that particular topic makes sense, because you could get into a whole political landscape of how you jury-mandar it and, and how you guarantee a certain outcome of elections based on, on numbers moving forward.
I'm not suggesting that, sorry.
Yeah, no, I know.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting that that would be the fix. I'm suggesting there's an opportunity to hear again from the RTM members who may have thoughts on this. It may provide additional clarity. Again, if it's an area where it's still confusing for, for people, why not try to address it if possible? I'm not saying it needs a lot of time, it may not get time, but if it's not on the list, it can't be addressed.
So Jim, Jim Baldwin or Attorney Menick, in, in effort to get a better understanding of this, do you have that language in front of you, that's in the current charter?
Yes.
Yes.
Current or proposed?
Well, it's the same language, it's not changed.
It's the same language, it hasn't been adjusted. Can you just read that?
Read the part with the, the composition or the entire paragraph?
The entire paragraph, please, because Nancy makes a point of, can we provide more clarity? And I'd just like to know what that paragraph says out loud.
Happy, happy to do so. Okay. "After completion of the census of the United States, and after any reapportionment of the State General Assembly districts affecting the town, voting districts of the town shall be established by an ordinance proposed by a committee of the RTM, composed of an equal number of members from each party, such that the population deviation from the largest, from largest to the smallest voting district shall not exceed ten percent. The redistricting ordinance adopted by the RTM shall provide for an equal number of members from each district, and to the extent practicable within the constraints of the charter, charter, and the State General Assembly redistricting shall provide for districts that are located in only one State General Assembly district." Period.
That language, as it reads to me, is pretty specific and pretty clear.
I don't have anything else to say. I know there's a motion on the table. I don't have any further comments, so.
So, right, so I, I'm not inclined to change what we have. I think it's worked well, Tom, I, I, I respect your points about, you know, having an issue at some point in time with a political piece to this. I like equal numbers, I know it's not always clean. Did somebody say the other day, government's messy? Well, I think this kind of, it's probably, this is a good messy.
Yeah, my point, my point is with that language in the charter, it was so clear, I don't know that the charter can resolve the dispute, you know what I'm saying? I don't think it's, appreciate, and by the way, Nancy, I greatly appreciate you raising it, I think that was a good call out. I just don't see how the charter can resolve that, because the language is very clear as to what their charge is. The fact that they're bickering over it or what have you is, is a different situation.
So can, um, if there's no further discussion on it, we have a motion and a second?
I'm in favor.
Nancy's in favor, I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
All right, motion fails. Can I, um, call for a break for everyone to use the restrooms, or do whatever they need to do?
Please.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Too much beverage.
All right, Mr. Bino. Your phone on vibrate? Okay. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. And we were.
At item number fif, thirteen, thirteen, I'm sorry, twelve.
Twelve.
Twelve. So this is Article four, Section four point two, point B, one A. There's two parts to this. The first part is pertaining to the approval of Board of Education items that are contracts in excess of a hundred thousand dollars, which are exempted from competitive procurement. And as I believe, the town attorney and I both informed you that we have talked to counsel for the Board of Education, and we are recommending that that provision go away, that that be stricken, and we would ask the, the Charter Revision Commission, in effect, to eliminate that, that provision. And the second part of this is, and I believe this came from Selectman Flynn, wanted to reduce, for the remaining, for the, the general side, the city side, the town side, to reduce the threshold from a hundred thousand to fifty thousand. So there's two parts, I don't know if you want to separate them, if everybody feels comfortable with it, but there's two parts to this, this item.
Can we just send it this way? And I think the commission.
Okay.
Should I move Article twelve, or item twelve?
Yes.
Okay.
So move, I'll second.
Okay. Is there any further discussion on this item? We want to send it back to the commission?
Yeah, quick question on this, to the attorneys. This is, the Board of Education part on this, this was the part that you gentlemen have met with the BOE's attorneys on this and made sure that, are, are going to make sure, along with the Charter Revision Commission, that any of the language is consistent with state statute and requirements. Is that correct?
That is correct. We'll, we'll make sure that we run it by their counsel as we're developing the language, to make sure that there's no issue whatsoever.
Okay.
And I would add, and I, I, that's a question I'm happy you asked. I guess in deciphering what we heard from public comments and in emails we received, that there was concern around the added level of oversight by the executive body in purchasing and contracts. So I, I want to make sure that.
Oversight of what?
Oversight of the Board of Ed. So I just want to make sure this is covered.
This is totally different from what, that issue that was.
But that's what I'm saying broadly. So I just want to make sure that either in Article twelve, and if not thirteen, that, that is looked at. Because those are, comments came up repeatedly by members of.
You want more oversight of the Board of Education?
No, 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 there was concern about the additional level of oversight. At least that's what I'm parsing from the comments.
Okay, so I think there's two issues here. This issue is separate from what I think you're talking about. There was another issue that was raised that I think Attorney Menick put some language in, but there is basic language in our charter that has, that Board of, Board of Education purchasing items go through our purchasing department, it's always been that way. I think there was additional language of some kind that was a mistake of some kind, and then Attorney Menick and Attorney Baldwin had a conversation with the attorney for the Board of Ed, which I believe they clarified. Attorney Baldwin, am I saying this right? Am I saying this wrong?
Yeah, I, I think it's the same issue, and, and just the main point being that we will look at the document in its entirety, especially with regard to this section and any others dealing with contracts, to make sure that they're consistent with state statute.
Here, here's what I would, yeah, here's what I'd like on this. I totally respect the separation of the two entities. However, we have a fiduciary responsibility to the town on the town side, and therefore I want to make sure that whatever we put in the charter, we are fulfilling right up to what, that level of independence. I understand the level of independence, but I also understand that, um, the fiduciary responsibility. So we shouldn't go over that line, but we shouldn't back up too far from that line, so something can fall between the cracks. That would be not in the best interest of the taxpayers.
And, and Mr. Flynn, or Tom, if I could.
Sure.
Follow up on that, because that's a very good point, and I need to correct myself in what I just said, because the authority of the administration to review the purchasing of the Board of Ed is not necessarily, um, normal procedure, but it's something that's existed in our town charter for a long time, and prior to any statutes, and therefore it can stay in, and it is the intention of the CRC, with the principles in mind that you just articulated, to keep that part of the charter provision.
Thank you, Jim.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. And this is to send back to the CRC. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none? All in favor?
Yeah, I just, sorry, I need one minute.
Aye. Oh.
Sorry, yep, I'm almost there. Um, I, yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Item number thirteen.
I'll make a motion to move item, oh, sorry.
Item thirteen?
Item thirteen is Article four, Section four point three B, five. I think that means six. Five and six. Oh, five and eight, actually, but I think five and six, there's a, an issue of redundancy. Actually, if you, four and five, you may have, you may want to modify this to, to deal with the redundancy in four and five. And.
Oh, four, this is, is this the budget thing we were talking about?
Yeah, yeah.
So obviously, um, well, I'm so focused on, um, other things that I had a chance to talk to our CFO about this today. Now, I did ask, there was redundancy in item four and five that we spoke about yesterday, but there's parts also in there and that, I didn't really take it into consideration in, in a realistic way. That the way that it's written, and I think the CRC definitely needs to look at this a little bit more, and obviously all three of us are going to be engaged in that process. It has in it now, um, every, uh, provision to take up the capital, but, the budget, capital budget alongside the operating budget. And in hindsight, now, this morning, talking to CFO, I said, boy, that sounds like a lot of, you know, a lot for, for the bodies to be doing all at once. Now, right now, we don't have anything in our charter that talks about how we do this. It was kind of just done over the years differently. If you remember, we had the capital planning workshop, which was everybody talking about the items, and then, then the administration choosing which ones they wanted. I moved to having a capital planning workshop with two members of the Board of Finance, two members of the RTM, and everybody, we did put our year capital plan together that went through and the bodies and were voted on, different items. And then we're reconvening in the fall to put together a five-year capital plan, because it's, Jared realized, you know, talking to other CFOs and being on those interactions, they have blogs and groups, they talk about how towns should have one. So we're putting that together, but I just think that, that we need to talk a little bit more about this with the CRC to see what would be the best timeframe. Should we, you know, do it in December? Should there be a one-year? Because according to what it's written now, there's a one-year capital plan, but I just don't think it'd be appropriate to do it during the actual budget. You know, I think it should be either done before, I think it should be done before, actually.
So Brenda, Brennick, can I help on that?
Yeah.
Yeah, so.
Have we moved the.
Many years ago, I thought we did, did we not? If we didn't, I'll move, I'll move it.
I'll sec, I'll second it, just for the record.
Thanks, thanks, Nancy.
Sorry.
You're, you're absolutely right, because many years ago, they tried to do the capital plan at the same time they did the operating budget. And not only was it a lot of work, it was also convoluted and confusing. What was in the budget, what was not in the budget, because a lot of times what gets put into the capital plan will drive maybe what is, what is in or what is out. will drive maybe what is, what is in or what is out of the capital outline in the operating plan. And that is exactly why we bifurcated the two and moved the capital plan to the fall months. And then we had that information set and stolen and locked up. And I think the votes on the capital plan, if I remember correctly, actually took place in January. So by the time the operating budget was presented in the springtime, you know, in the March area, the winter, springtime, we knew what was going on with the capital plan, at least for the next year. And then, of course, we did, as you correctly said, put into place the capital planning process and the workshop that was always scheduled for September, which was notoriously a quiet time on the financial front. So I completely agree with you. And on this item as well, we want to be very specific on the language, because if you recall when we discussed this, the reader could be led to believe that it was both the financial plan as well as a capital plan, a financial plan being really the operating plan of the town, which you don't want to publish for a five-year period. And then, of course, the capital plan, which would be five years. So it's really both those items, from my perspective. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, for bringing that up, you know, because you're right. That was a little confusing, where that part that I didn't mention that you just brought up, the long-range capital plan, financial plan, you know, that type of stuff, and, you know, we just weren't really digging deep into that now. But you're right, I obviously want to reconvene that group, and I would like to have our five-year done before January. But obviously, we should capitalize and move on that first year, you know, next year's, having it ready to go prior. So I think this is something, we'll communicate, my CFO will be involved, the town CFO, and your input, Tom, will be helpful, too, to the CRC, to make sure we do it in a way that's, that makes sense.
Yeah, I think, Brenda, to your point, maybe we want to, and I'll defer to the attorneys, gentlemen. Is this written in such a way that this item number thirteen, that it can also address the schedule, to Brenda's point? Or do we need to rewrite this to include the timeframe as well?
It's funny, you anticipated a point I was dying to make. And that is, if you take a look at item number 24, I wanted to see if you wanted to combine them, because item 24 deals with Article Nine, which addresses the issue of reviewing the budget timeline. And in light of the issue the first select one brought up, I was going to add, and the content of the budget.
Yep.
So if we're dealing with this issue in conjunction with her duties, that's how it came up, because the duties refer to it, do you want to include that in your motion to bring the timeline and the content of the budget and move 24 at the same time that you're dealing with?
So leave, so you're saying leave 12...
Well, I mean, you could...
Leave 13...
This is...
That redundancy from four to...
I'm saying that combine 13 and 24.
Timeline conversation.
The only thing I would say there is, the next item seems to relate to that. It's sort of the...
Well, I'm saying leave it where it is, but I'm just saying jump it right now to address it, to address 13 and 24 simultaneously.
12 and 24, because if you look at 24, it's the same thing.
And doesn't 25 sort of lead into that broader discussion of budget meetings and...
No, this is different. This is about the content.
That's a different issue.
Yeah, leave that separate.
Okay.
That's a different issue.
I'm happy to include, to amend the motion on the table to include number 24.
Okay, very good. Do you want to make a motion? Make a motion.
And I'll second that.
Very good. Okay, so on the floor, on the floor now is a motion. We have 12, and we have an amendment to add 24 to 12.
Thirteen.
Sorry, thirteen.
Not 12, 13.
Thirteen, thirteen.
And... To add 24.
Can I, um...
Go ahead.
Can I speak to that?
Yes.
Can I speak to that?
I'm going to open that, yep.
I, when we say budget timeline, I'd like to make a motion to amend that to say budget and capital planning timeline, just so that we're very clear.
Yep, I'll second that.
Can we just vote on that one point, and then we can go back to the motion?
Yeah, let's vote on the amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 So now the motion, in fact...
And then, yeah, thank you. And then when we talk about budget timeline, I just want to be very clear here. This was, part of this was my point. I want to make sure that we're allowing the town bodies the same timeframe they currently get to review the budget. So I don't want to jam the town bodies in terms of their approval process for the budget. So I would like, I would ask that the Charter Commission, when we talk about this budget timeline, my expectation is they come back and say, at present, the way it's laid out, you've got 12 weeks, you know, to approve the budget. And we want to make sure they have that same time, to give them the time to do their work. That, that's what my expectation. And then, Brenda, as well, that if we're going to codify when we do the capital planning, that we segregate that off from the budget timeline and do that separately, as you brought up.
Right, and those are things they can look at. I, you know, we've had that discussion. We could have it again...
Yeah.
During, with the CRC. I think one week.
Yeah.
It's only one less week, the way they have it now, which I don't think hampers anyone's ability, because they are doing it in a coordinated effort, and it still gives them the opportunity to have their separate meetings outside of the collaborative meetings. But, so the, I just want to be clear, the motion, I want to make sure, because I know Prue is somewhere listening for them. I want to make sure we have the motion clear. Attorney Mednick, will you?
So on the, on the motion for Article 13 side of the motion, it's review the capital plan issue in subparagraph four. I would add four and five, and compare to subparagraph six for redundancy, and to coordinate with the budget function in Article 10.
Yes.
And then you also had a second part, which we haven't discussed, regarding the staffing issues in subsection eight, which was the section on investigation of federal and state funds. That was part of this as well.
But to be clear, the art, the motion on the table is...
No, I'm just making sure that he, the whole motion is clear for the person who's writing it, but I just want to say we're at the staffing issue, and I know Jared brought this up earlier. And this is something we need to send back, because there is some additional language in there, reporting on grants and all this other stuff, but...
That's right, that's right, yeah.
I think that needs to be...
And that, that's what is included in here as well.
Right, we don't have to have that in-depth of a conversation about it, because we're sending it to the CRC, and we can discuss it with them in more depth. But then we're adding Article 24.
Then the second portion is Article 24, which is to review the budget and capital planning timeline and content of the budget.
Capital planning and content. All right, I just want to make sure for Prue's edification, because, you know, she has to write these up, but...
The only thing I, the only, the only point of clarification I would make there is, I didn't see it as quote-unquote staffing. What I saw it as is reporting, right? There was confusion as to what the reporting requirement is of the administration to the other town bodies related to the status of grants and all that kind of stuff. It was really the reporting issue, not a staffing issue.
So staffing and reporting, or just...
I think it's reporting, isn't it?
Then it is reporting, not staffing. I don't know, maybe I misheard. So reporting.
Okay, so let's remove that.
Reporting issues, okay.
Well, do we need to make a motion, because right now...
Well, maybe we make one big motion, because we have a lot of amendments out here, so I think...
So, well, that's what I was just going to suggest, that right now, as it stands, it's, the motion on the table is to include item 24 as amended to item 13, which has not been amended. So I'm going to make a motion to change the word staffing to reporting.
Second it.
And to make sure the paragraph, subparagraph four is also included in the numbers.
Do you want to add that?
Second it, yes.
I can't make a motion.
So I'm going to revise my motion to say reporting, change staffing from reporting, and add subparagraph four.
And I will second that motion, Nancy.
So...
All right, this is amendment, this is an amendment, amending it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, back to the main motion. As amended, several times.
Yes, so...
Okay. Oh, boy, somebody's going to have to help Prue with this one, I'm just telling you.
No, no, it's, it's easy. It's, it's, right? And I, we're voting on 13.
13 with 24 attitude.
As amended.
13 and 24.
Reporting and subparagraph four.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. All right.
Okay.
Next, 14.
The next item is 14. This is Article Four, Section 4.3C, three. Please review the mediation and resolution clause in order to achieve clarity of purpose.
I'll move item 14.
Second it. This was the item that I came up with, where it sounded as though we were having the first select person resolve disputes from other town bodies and boards. And what we had discussed at our table, and want to kick back, is whether the word resolution should just come out, and whether it should be mediation, just to be clear.
Sure.
I have no further discussion. I'm happy to support this recommendation.
Me, too. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Item number 15?
The next issue is item number 15, Article Four, Section 4.3F. Town administrator, please consider delineation of duties, appointment or approval by the Board of Select Persons, change of title to chief administrative officer, codify a reporting obligation to the Board of Select Persons and other ways and means to clarify the role of that position in government.
I'll move item 15.
And I'll second it, and I have some thoughts on it, but I'll hold off.
No, go ahead.
I can support some of this, but not all of this. A lot of it, I don't want to waste time. It's discussion that we had the other day, when I laid out my rationale. I think it's important to have delineation of duties. I don't support an approval by the Board of Select Persons for the arguments I articulated the other day. I agree with the change of title to the chief administrative officer. And I agree with codifying a reporting obligation to the Board of Select people, people, persons. And I think that Part D, the other ways and means to clarify the role in government, quite honestly, I think that's covered by bullet point A, so I think that's redundant. And those are my comments on this motion.
Okay.
I also don't have so much to add from my previous comments, except to say, I would urge us to agree to have the CRC review this recommendation as written in its entirety, just for the sake of, for the purposes of conversation and evaluation of, and I guess, to look again at the rationale of why it may or may not make sense to have, which I do support, having this appointment be approved by the Board of Select Persons. I heard what you had said about wanting to be able to pick your person, and you, I still think that that allowed, this as written would allow for it. But I do think it's worth the discussion. So I would encourage us to vote, at least just to let the CRC look at it, even if ultimately there isn't majority support for it. But, as I said, I had made that case over the course of these past few weeks.
So I would, I would say, if there isn't support from the board now, I don't want to waste the CRC's time regarding the Board of Selectmen, approval of the CAO. I think we should amend this to send back whatever parts we do feel need some tweaking, but not send back parts that we know aren't, don't have majority support.
Sure.
Tom, do you have any?
Would you like me to propose my amendment?
Yes, please.
Yeah, I would like to amend item 15 to take out bullet point B, the appointment by approval of the Board of Select Persons, to take out point D, which is the other ways and means to clarify the role in government. Only because I believe that point is redundant with the delineation of duties. And that's my motion.
So your, your motion is to amend the item to remove item number B and item number D?
The second item D.
That is correct.
You have two Ds there.
Oh, got it.
Yeah, the second item D, yeah, yeah, the second item D, my apologies. The other ways and means to clarify the role in government. That's why I read that, actually.
Okay. All right, you make a motion, you made a motion to amend. I'll second it. Discussion?
I don't have anything to say.
Any discussion? Okay.
I don't.
Okay. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Um, no, and that's on the amendment.
Okay, so now...
I do have things to add about...
All right, the item as amended is back. The amendment passes, and then the item now is as amended. Removing B and, I mean, excuse me, B and the second D.
I'm only hesitating, because I'm trying to think about what's supporting the motion or not supporting it. And I recognize it's, in part, symbolic. I guess for me, what would be more important is I want there to be a conversation around this position, but I don't want it to be misconstrued that I didn't support more regulation around defining and the things we just removed. So, so that's why I'm just...
I think that's noted, Nancy.
Yeah, I just, I guess I'm saying it again, that I'm going to support it, because I want the CRC to look at it. I don't, I don't want them to not look at it at all, but I just wanted to make sure that my position was clear, which, you know, yes, I think it has been made clear, but I'm supporting it with a dot, dot, dot.
Okay, all right, so we have the amended motion on the floor. No, do I have a motion to accept the amended motion?
I think, we did that. No, no, now it's a motion to move again.
We're there.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Item number 16.
The next item is Article Five, Section 5.2F, and then Article Seven, 7.17. This is regarding the elimination, please review the elimination of the constables as elected officials.
So I'll move item 16.
I'll second it for discussion purposes. So I'm going to say that I don't believe this item should go back to the CRC. I think that the point was made, maybe not for the average citizen, who may have not been listening to the meeting at that time, but that the constable is actually a very serious position. They serve documents of sensitive nature, divorce papers, custody papers, taking away someone's authority to manage their own affairs, papers. It's very sensitive, and so I think that the probate court should have a say in who does this sensitive work, and that the Board of Selectmen should approve upon the recommendation of the court. And I think it's smart, it makes sense to me. I think that this item has been in the, in the charter for a very, very long time, and that we have a, we have a court asking us to do this. And to me, it makes a lot of sense, so. I'm, I'm not inclined to send it back to the commission. I think we should leave it the way it is. Is there any, any discussion on this item?
Yeah.
Sure. Go ahead.
Yeah. I appreciate totally what you're saying, and ultimately, I'm likely there. It's just, we heard so relative to the number of people that did speak out, percentage-wise of town, of the town, of members in the town. And there were quite a few people that either called me, or showed up and spoke, or wrote letters, and I just think, giving them a chance to have one more opportunity to state their case, it doesn't hurt. I really do understand the rationale. I understand why ultimately it may land and be eliminated as an elected position. I'm just inclined to let the people who it impacts have their say, you know, have their day one more time. So I'm going to, I'm in favor of leaving it here.
So I appreciate that position. I actually, in thinking about this a lot, and I have friends that are constables... I actually, in thinking about this a lot, and I have friends that are constables and the like, I think the people that it's impacting the most are the people that Brenda just articulated, which is the people going through a difficult time. And I think it's incumbent upon us in today's day and age to defer to the court and make sure that they have people that they're more comfortable with delivering those, those bad, bad news in a lot of cases that require a deft touch, and it's, I think there's a, there's this humanity to this, that we need to do whatever we can to make sure it's sacrosanct in this at this point in time. And that is not a comment on anybody currently doing the role or any of the constables whatsoever. It's just a comment on the assurance going forward that we continue to have the right people doing this by making sure they're appointed and they're people that the court would like to work with.
Just to say, I respect the position that you're both taking. I'm just going to support it, and I do recognize I'm in the minority here, but I appreciate what you've both just said.
And again, I just want to mention for the record, voting to not send it back to the CRC does not mean that individuals can't email the Board of Selectmen and make their cases again. We did receive feedback from mostly people who currently serve in those roles, but I think that the CRC has a lot on their plate, and so I, I, I'm going to not, I'm not going to support moving this.
That's an important point that the first select woman just brought up, that even if you do not send it back to the CRC, if members of the public were to persuade you that you should retain the current situation, if you reject the final report, which includes the modification, then you resurrect the current system.
Got it.
All right.
Thank you.
I thought that's what you were saying.
Well, thank you, I was.
Okay, so actually, that's an interesting point. So if something doesn't happen, people are still empowered to, to advocate for their position in the way you just outlined. Okay.
That is correct.
But this isn't a final vote, is essentially what you're saying. So should something come up in the next 30 days or whatever that we decide is a more compelling argument, and we can just pull it out at that point.
Yeah, I'm going to, it actually just helped me change my support here, because again, I think the fact that people will have an opportunity to advocate makes a little bit of a difference, and I will, I'm aligned, I'm now aligned with the two of you.
Okay, very good. All in favor of...
Aye.
No, no, you're not.
All in favor is to...
Oh, damn it.
All right, nobody's, all in favor. All opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed. The motion fails.
Item number 17 is Section 5.5. This is in the assessors' language. The commission, please review whether there is a continued role for the Board of Finance on, I'm sorry, not the assessors, it's in the Board of Finance section, for the Board of Finance on the issue of the assessment system. What they did is they deleted longtime language, because this is conducted statutorily in the state, and so the question would be whether there is a role that the Board of Finance can continue to play, or does continue to play, and whether the CRC should take a look at that issue.
Can I get a motion to have a discussion?
I'll move item...
Same vote.
I'll second it.
Okay, so let's open it up. My understanding is we don't need this, but I'm going to open it up to the board.
My understanding, so I had to deal with this when I was on the Board of Finance, and it was always a, a matter of interpretation of defining what an assessment system was, right? My understanding is that upon a lot of review by our attorneys and the like, and this came up by the Board of Finance, actually, while I was serving on the Board of Selectmen as well, while we were serving on the Board of Selectmen. My understanding is this is an outdated provision of our charter that is somewhat in conflict with state statute and kind of the advance in technology and the advance in how the state has now controlled the assessment systems and laid out guidelines for them. And because of that, this is no longer needed and is in conflict with what the state is requiring. Mr. Baldwin, I think you can eloquently speak to this more eloquently than I can.
Thank you, Mr. Flynn. I'm not sure that I can. I think that you summed it up very appropriately. The language really has, brings no value to the charter or to the assessment system, and it does nothing to take away the purview of the Board of Finance to certainly oversee and question that process, but the process is dictated by statute and certainly not by the charter, which this kind of suggests happens, and that simply isn't the case. So it is archaic and unnecessary language, as you pointed out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So we have a motion in a second.
I have no further comment.
So all, I'm going to start off this way. All opposed.
Well, I'm in favor...
I'm opposed.
I'm in favor of keeping it on.
No, no, this is to send it back to the CRC to change it.
I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it here as an item for discussion for the CRC, so I'm not voting.
So just to be correct, so I'm not, if we don't send this back to the CRC, was this being removed from our charter?
Yes.
Because it's no longer relevant and it's antiquated?
Correct.
So voting no is to stop it?
Is just to leave it the way it is.
Leave it?
Nothing in there.
They don't need to go back and look at it.
Get rid of it.
It doesn't go back.
Right, okay, so, all right. So just so we're really clear.
So I'm voting in favor. The two of you have voted against.
Okay. All right, so this motion fails, two to one.
It will not go back to, correct.
Okay, got it.
Can we, can we just hear the actual voice vote of Mr. Flynn, the first select woman?
Yeah, so both, so opposed. I'm opposed.
I'm opposed.
And in favor?
I am in favor, Selectwoman Lefkowitz.
All right. Motion fails, two to one.
The next item is item number 18, Article 5, Section, left the section mark out, 5.7b1. And probably should add, language, please review whether there is a difference between a master plan and a plan of conservation and development. The way this came up was we had included in the budget a provision dealing with the POCD. It was determined before the commission voted to send this over here that that was not relevant. We then had a further discussion as we went back to this section. We talked about a master plan, and we believed that the conservation that the POCD is properly set forth in that section. I don't know what the reason for the question is, but I guess the reason for the question is, is there a difference? We believe there is. I don't think that would be a difficult issue for the commission to resolve.
Okay.
I'll move item 18.
I'll second it.
Okay. I don't have any discussion.
Is there any discussion on this item?
No.
Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item 19.
The next item is 6.1 in Article 6, 6.1.a. Please review whether the elector requirement should attach to the position of town attorney. So in other words, whether the town attorney should not have to be an elector of the town.
Do I have a motion?
I'll move this motion.
I'll second it.
Okay. The item is on the floor and seconded. Is there discussion on this item?
I am actually fine with this motion. I think it makes sense in today's day and age.
So do you want to clarify, you want to send this back to the CRC, Mr. Flynn?
I do. I think, I think there were other positions within the charter that they've, that they've taken out the provision that they needed to be electors, and I think that we should do the same here in today's day and age, particularly, I deal a lot with human resources, and getting the right person or the right firm to do the job, I think, is much more important in 2022 than making sure that this person is an elector. I'd rather get the best person or firm for the job.
Thank you. You know, I have to say, I didn't really think about it too much, and then I was thinking about it as we were looking through these items, as when we got the information, and I would, I would agree with you. I think it's sort of an old vestige, and I don't think it matters.
But isn't it currently as written that they shall be an elector of the town?
Yes.
Or is it may be an elector of the town?
Shall.
Shall.
Shall be.
And I would encourage, just as a, I agree it needs to be looked at, but I would encourage the CRC to consider the language to "maybe."
Okay.
And I'm saving that for the record.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item?
The next item, the next item is item 20, Article 6, the very last section of Article 6, 6.10, and this would be, please review whether the Board of Select Persons by majority vote may also introduce ordinances creating boards and commissions and clarify the authority of the Board of Selectmen to introduce ordinances of this nature.
Motion, is there a motion?
I'll move item 20.
Is there a second?
Second.
Item is up for discussion. Is there any comment on this item?
Nope.
So I, I need some clarification here, because what is this? Right now, our RTM can pass ordinances, the Board of Selectmen does not pass ordinances. They can suggest ideas to the RTM. What is this, what is this asking to do here? What is this?
I'm wondering also in part if this dovetails to the idea, perhaps Attorney Baldwin emanating out of our discussions about codes of conduct and rules of civility, and what can be, what can come out of the Board of Selectmen? And it was an opportunity to review the purview of the Board of Selectmen in its ability to, to do so. I think that's the context in which we talked about this.
Yeah, I confess, I do not recall that connection. I'm not saying that it wasn't discussed, but I don't recall it, and I...
Because I think it was around the Racial Equity and Justice Task Force and codifying some of that, codifying our ability...
I think, you're alluding, you're alluding to the ability of the Board of Select Persons to create temporary advisory boards and commissions, and that provision already exists in the Charter, and then the RTM certainly has the authority to create permanent boards and commissions, but that same authority does not exist with the Board of Select Persons. As Attorney Mednick pointed out, the Board of Select Persons certainly has the ability to make recommendations and propose legislation, but ultimately, it is the province of the legislative body to pass any such ordinance, creating a new board or commission on a permanent basis. I think it's already covered by the Charter, I guess is my main point.
So are you suggesting that this recommendation is redundant in that it's already covered in its entirety of what the intention?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, I am.
Okay.
So I don't think this needs to go back.
If it's covered...
I agree.
If it's covered.
All right, so can...
I agree.
All right, so we have a motion in a second. All in...
Let's vote.
All in favor? All opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Aye.
Motion fails.
20 fails.
Yep, it's out.
Item 21, whoops, sorry. Item number 21 is Article 7, 7.5. Please review the status of the town treasurer.
Motion?
I'll move item, where are we? 21?
21.
21.
And I'll, I'll second that. Can I, I thought this was already considered by the committee, and they decided to leave it in here at the present time. Isn't that correct?
Yes, I thought so. I...
That is correct. It was, it was considerable debate.
Yeah, and there was.
We talked about keeping it in because it just allowed for it.
It was like, it was like a Jenga game. If you pulled out something, it might fall apart, and we don't know what it might be.
I think it brought to bear, I think it's worth a different conversation, because I think, I think we currently have a town treasurer, and it just brought up that people...
We do.
Are perhaps confused about the roles and responsibilities, so maybe at a date uncertain in the near future, we could just talk about what it is in context, because it made people realize like, oh, we have that?
Right.
What is it?
Right.
What are they doing?
What do they do?
Do we pay them?
Yeah, I think that's, I think that's fair. I don't think it needs to go back to the CRC, but I think it's, I think the point is valid about making sure we have a clarity of purpose and roles and responsibility. I think that's very fair.
All right, so we...
I would like to add, I would just like to add that this dovetails somewhat with discussion which is going to ensue about the Board of Library Trustees and some other aspects of the Charter, which have already been changed by the CRC, which made reference to the town treasurer, and where that reference made no sense, that is, in practicality, those responsibilities that mention the town treasurer are in fact handled by the CFO. That has been changed in the Charter. The only thing that remains are the more limited responsibilities of the treasurer, particularly as it concerns issuance of bonds and signing documents and the like, which that treasurer continues to do today, and, and that was the reticence of why, or the reason why the commission was reluctant to, to remove the position entirely, but that is not to say that the Charter, which addressed the town treasurer in so many instances, as I just described, were not changed. They were changed to modernize and update the current practices with respect to the CFO's role in the town.
Okay, so...
Thanks, Jim.
So we have a motion on the floor and a second. Approval, yes, would be to send it back to the commission, and opposed would be to not.
And to be clear, this is 21 for the town treasurer.
Correct. All in favor? All opposed? Opposed.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item.
So are you going to vote on this item first?
Oh, I said, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, oppose.
Okay.
If I didn't, I said it in my head.
All right, so the item is, fails, and it does not go back to the commission. All right, now, would you like to say?
I'd like to make a motion to have the CRC, I'd like to make a motion to have the CRC reevaluate the chief of staff position as officer, as an appointed town officer.
That's more of an edit. Yeah, it's an editing decision, because I put, I put them in, and the commission approved, placing them in the title, the titles, but if they're not town officers, they shouldn't be there. So it was almost...
So I'm, I'm misunderstanding. Is this to reexamine them being town officers, or would they just be like a department, you know, a town employee? I'm misunderstanding what the motion's about.
The motion, because it's, it exists under the officers, under the appointed town officers, and to be clear, the motion is not about whether the position is a good one, or it shouldn't be as part of the office of the first select person, but I'm arguing that the chief of staff should not be considered an appointed town officer.
What, what does that mean?
What should they be considered? Where should they be?
Under...
Thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, I just don't know that, again, I'd have to look, I just, it's, it's a staff person of the office of the first select person. I don't know that it needs to be codified by Charter.
So we're adding the, we're, so do you want to take it out of the Charter in total?
Correct.
No, no, she wants to take it out of subsection 7.1a, where it's listed as under the appointed town officers, and just leave it where it is.
Just remind me then where it is, because I want to be sure I...
Yeah, yeah. Article 7.
I see it here.
7.1... 7.1A lists officers appointed by the First Select Person. They may mistakenly be in there. They are currently staff-appointed by the First Select Person, and she is arguing that the Town Administrator and the Chief of Staff, which is in section 4.3F, E&amp;F, so she's not proposing to take it out of the Charter. She's proposing, I assume, to take it out of the defined appointed Town Officers, is my assumption.
So I'm having trouble understanding why. What's the difference between that designation or the other?
Jim Baldwin, can I speak to this?
Sure, go ahead, Attorney Baldwin.
Because a Town Office, by definition, and this is the old Charter language, which remains, means any position in Town Government, which is described by this Charter or the Town Code, except membership on the representative town meeting. And then Town Officer means an individual elected or appointed to a Town Office, including any appointed Town Officer, whether established by this Charter, the Town Code, or other than as a member of a board or commission. So I don't think you can avoid the fact that unless you eliminate the position in its entirety, you can avoid the moniker of Town Officer, is my point. I mean, that is, by definition, quite literally, that person is a Town Officer.
So let me ask, Jim, very quickly. We just, before, discussed a Town Administrator. Is the Chief... Are the Chief of Staff and the Town Administrator positions going to be in the same section of the Charter?
Yes.
Yeah, I believe that they would be, by definition. But if you take the... If you separated them out, it still wouldn't change the... It would be a conflict in the language of the definition of what a Town Officer is.
No, no, yeah, yeah, no, I'm not debating that. I'm just trying to say, my intention would be to have the Chief of Staff and the Town Administrator on par and in the same section of the Charter, thought of and viewed in that same manner. If the... I was trying to get to where Nancy was going, because Nancy, you and Attorney Mednick seem to be saying different things, because he's interpreting what you're saying as you don't want to take it out of the Charter. You seem to be saying that, or at least when I directly asked, you seem to say you wanted to completely take it out of the Town Charter. So I was just trying to get clarification on that.
Yeah, thank you. I was trying to get there. But yes, I'm talking about the motion to remove it, not just from the section.
Got it. So your motion is to eliminate the Chief of Staff position from the Town Charter. And in essence, what you're doing is you're replacing, you're adding the Town Administrator, but removing the Chief of Staff. At the end of the day, that's what your motions are about. That's what your...
Correct, and it's not to comment on what I think... It's not about the position, it's about where I think the position belongs thematically. But I think it's worthy of a discussion, at least at the CRC level, the advantages and disadvantages.
So I think, you know, they discussed these positions ad nauseam during the CRC, and it was even supported by members of your own party on the Commission, who thought that the Chief of Staff position became a political football for a couple of times. And the administration of our town, to have people who are codified in the Charter, who help manage a town of 62,000-plus people, should not be subject to the whims of politics, and that there should always be the appropriate front staff to manage a town of our size, and to make sure that all the business of the town is being managed. So I do not support sending this back to the Commission. They looked at it, they talked about it, they received feedback from it, and they unanimously supported keeping it in the Charter.
So I just want to say two things in response. One, I don't question the need or question the Administration's hiring of that position. I just don't agree that it needs to be codified in this way by Charter. And while it's always good to hear that members of my own party feel a certain way, I'm here representing Fairfield and comments that I've heard, but I'm also here as my own unique person, serving in this role. So I want to make sure that that is front and center, and that people understand that, that I represent constituency broadly. So it's my point of view, and I think worthy of discussion, again, in the context of all the discussions we've had. So, you know, I don't think the motion's been seconded, although there's been lots of discussion.
No, so you have a motion on the floor to remove the Chief of Staff from the Charter. And I have not heard a second.
But I do appreciate the discussion.
Thank you for clarifying your position, too, Nancy.
Thank you for asking the question. I have another motion I'd like to make, to include as an officer appointed by the Board of Select Persons, to include a DEI, Diversity, Equity, Inclusion Officer, as appointed by the Board of Select Persons. Okay, silence is overwhelming. I would just love to say on the record that I hope that at a future date, when we talk about, when we take a deep dive into staffing and boards and commissions and other things, that we really take a serious look at the inclusion of this important position, whatever we call it, but to cover issues of diversity, equity, and inclusion at the codified level.
Yeah, Nancy, I agree. Thank you for bringing it up. I think, you know, quite frankly, we tried to include something in the budget this year. The three of us, I think, pushed that forward, and it got shut down in the Human Resources Department. So I think the point is, your point is noted. So thank you.
Yes, and I'll piggyback on that.
Me, from me.
Obviously, I included that in my budget, because I thought it was an important role to have. It was cut by the Board of Finance, and I will continue to try to institute that position in my budget, if not even go and ask before the next budget cycle. Because I do think our Human Resources Department is having an extraordinary amount of hard... having problems there because of the lack of staff. And it's showing, and I mentioned it, and it's bubbling up pretty good. And the new Human Resources Director is overwhelmed with the fact that we don't have enough staff in that department, and the fact I'd like to add that position to do the affirmative action, to have anyone, because we don't even have one, and to have that person, the new DEI person, diversity person, manage that.
I would love... Sorry.
So that's something I do care about. I don't want to put it in the Charter, but I will continue to fight for it, as I did last year.
And I would state for the record... I would like to state for the record that we have a different characterization of how that played out at the budget table, but I know that's not a discussion for here. I did just want to say for the record, I don't totally agree with that characterization, but I appreciate looking at this position in the future. I have another motion to make, if I could.
Would we be able to get through the motions we have, and then if you have any additional motions?
Sure, it's part of this article, but... Okay.
Okay, so our next item is item...
Item 22.
Okay.
And that's simply to... The Board of Library Trustees and CFO have made additional requests, and would like to have an opportunity to raise those issues with the Charter Revision Commission, under Article VIII, Section 8.16. We had made some changes...
Yep.
And they requested some additional changes as well.
So do we have a motion?
So moved.
Tom?
Seconded.
Okay, I know that they did work with the Town Attorney and Attorney Mednick, and they also have some additional items. They want some clarification. So I'm inclined to support their ability to share that information with the CRC, because I think it's important, and I don't think we should impede that. Is there any further discussion on this item? Anyone?
No.
All in favor?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
The next item is item 23, Article IX, Section 9.1A. This is the beginning of the Budget Section, where there's a cooperation provision. Wanted to ask to have the CRC consider moving the cooperation provision to Article I. I would also point out for the record that there may be, there's another cooperation provision in the Charter, so that if you were to support this as an item, that I would include whatever other cooperation provisions are in the Charter, if you want to move them to Article I.
Sure. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Seconded.
Article 20, or item 23.
Correct. I have no problem with this item. Is there any discussion on this item?
No, I'm good.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. And 24...
We already acted on... We already acted on.
13, and so 25?
25 is Article IX, Section 9.3. B. Please reevaluate the role of the First Select Person, I'm sorry, I didn't spell it out, as convener of the joint meetings, the joint budget meetings.
I'll move item... Do we have a motion? Sorry, Tom?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. Okay.
So, do we want to understand this a little bit? I thought that the information that came from the CRC was clear. The First Select Person would present the budget, as they do, as the CEO of the town, and the Board of Select... I'm sorry, the Board of Finance Chairperson would facilitate the budget meetings as they are being done, after the presentation.
Right, I think it's... I think it's clear to us, but I think what they're saying is the language wasn't cleaned up. So I think we need to specifically just say that in the language, is what I'm saying.
Oh, okay.
So I think, but I think, Steve, the one thing I would say is, as it's written, when it says joint meetings, I think we should just, I'd make the motion to say the joint budget meetings.
Okay.
Yes, absolutely. I added that in while I was making the presentation. You're right. So make that official, joint budget meetings.
Yes, I make the motion that we add the word "budget" to that.
You mean, make an amendment to the motion?
It's in the body of the resolution, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so you're making a motion to amend the motion. I'll second that. Sorry, what? Adding "budget" before "joint"?
Convener of the joint budget meetings, as opposed to joint meetings. The word "budget" was left out.
So that's an amendment. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
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 All right, we're back to the item as amended. Is there any further discussion on this item?
Nope.
All in favor?
No, I'm good.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Item number 26.
We acted on Subpart B already, adding a DEI officer. These are issues that were raised yesterday. There are three remaining items.
The intention was something slightly different, sorry.
Then you express it. I was trying to capture it, and I apologize if I did not.
No, no, I appreciate that. May I go ahead and...
Yes.
The idea was...
Would you want to get a motion on there? A motion to, we'll obviously discuss... Well, let's talk about it. Go ahead.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
The idea was to create a body. The DEI officer was one of the things. The motion I had made was specific to a Town Officer, understanding that that may not have passed muster. We talked additionally about creating a body that would address these issues, that would look at these things. So an ongoing board that would look not only...
So...
Those were just by some...
Those are examples of what they'd be looking at.
Correct.
So A is correct. The examples are just examples.
Exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry. I didn't understand that.
So I'll move item 26. It's on here. Does it need a second, or it doesn't even need a second?
Well, the motion to approve it needs a second.
Listen, I'll second it just to say that I don't know that we should be creating any additional boards in the Charter. I think the RTM, again, I'll say, we said this earlier, can establish any boards or commissions that they choose. I know that Attorney Mednick said quite a bit about how charters try to remove boards and commissions, and let them be more fluid through to elected bodies. So I'm not inclined to be establishing any more boards in the Charter. That's my thought on it.
To me, yeah, to me, this is way too broad. You know, essentially, for governmental reform, that, my view, and this is just my view, is that's the role of the Board of Selectmen, to decide on what areas need reform. And then, much like we did with the Charter Revision Commission, or the Diversity Task Force, or before us, the Strategic Planning Decision Commission, go ahead and assign people to those specific tasks. So I think that kind of outsource that, and say, we're going to have this uber-board that's going to decide that. I'm not in favor of that, because I think that's something that the Board of Selectmen, both ours and future, should be doing. That's my...
That's a good point, actually.
I have one every once in a while.
That's good, touche. All right, so we have a motion on the floor and a second. We've had discussion. Is there any additional discussion?
Nope. I'm in favor.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Opposed.
Aye.
So one in favor, two opposed. Motion fails. Item fails.
The next item is item number 27, and this is simply, you're also going to see it in the next "be it resolved" clause. This is to ask the Charter Commission, as it's going through this process, and the "be it resolved" clause is asking Town Attorney and the Counsel to the Commission, and the Board of Select Persons, everybody, to continue to pay attention, look at the document, look for errata, Scrivener's corrections, and in this case, under 27, the Commission should, in its document, back to you, indicate all the additional errata, if any, that comes to you. I've also added language here to ask them to take a look at the effective date provisions, in order to facilitate the implementation of any revisions. I don't think there are any issues, but I wanted to leave that open, just in case, as we're going through the documents, depending on what changes are discussed and made, that we may want to look at the effective date provisions. So this simply says, continue to look at the erratas, make the corrections, the Scrivener corrections. They will be indicated in the document that is returned to you, and to also have the ability to look at the effective date provisions in Section 10.5.
Okay.
Yeah, I've got no issues with this one. I think this needs and should be done.
Okay, so can I get a motion?
I'll move 27.
Seconded.
Is there any additional discussion on this item? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
So I have some additional recommendations that I'd like to...
Now, do we need to discuss any of this, or...
I do have discussions on this as well.
Okay.
But...
Do you want to bring this, who wants to... Do you want to...
Do you want me to...
I do have additional recommendations before we get to the "be it further resolved."
Oh, okay, so you have the motions that you...
I have additional motions.
Sure, go right ahead.
One is a question about something that I had asked for Attorney Mednick and Attorney Baldwin to provide. I see the red line, or I haven't had a chance to fully vet the original red line. If subsequently, is there language that we can put in, where if we see things that feel glaring, like glaring omissions from...
Since you just approved.
No, but in terms of things that were totally deleted, that we didn't cover, meaning...
If something was deleted by error?
Not necessarily by error, by... Because we haven't done a forensic accounting from the original, to know what was totally taken out, and not...
Nancy, I think I understand what you're saying, and the point being that if there is language in the old Charter that was not captured by the...
that if there is language in the old Charter that was not captured by the updated red line, which is supposed to reflect any and all deletions and insertions, that that be brought to the attention of the CRC for their consideration, and by virtue of that, for consideration of this board.
Correct.
Okay.
That's probably, that's probably covered by the errata provision, right, Jim? Some type of error like that that happened?
That was my only point.
I think it's a, I think it's a fair point. It's a little more detailed than that. So I think it's a fair point, and we could include it in that if you want to go back and modify that, or just add this as an amendment, or, sorry, as a new motion.
I think for simplicity.
Whichever works.
Does it seem for simplicity and for clarity of direction, makes sense to create a motion that articulates what you just articulated?
Can you repeat? Can you just repeat what you just articulated?
Then going back.
Well, I think what you said, Jim, was if there's anything that was in the Charter before that was accidentally deleted and not brought up here, is that what you're saying? That hasn't been discussed for change?
It's not even, it's not even if it was accidentally, it's if it was deleted but not called out as having been deleted, right, Jim?
Yeah, that's right. If it was not captured by the updated red line, it, it would, by operation of that fact, be subject to CRC review, I think is, is the easiest way to put it.
Nancy, do you want to put forward that motion? I'll second it.
I mean, I would defer to the attorney to try to put it in language that makes sense, that captures it.
I think, I think Jim just did.
I'll talk to Jim and try to.
As, as, I make a motion as just conveyed by Attorney Baldwin.
And the two attorneys will get together and make sure that we understand each other.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
So on this provision.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
I have two things that may be considered, well, one thing that may be just considered errata that I just want to point out. In 2.3D versus 4.2A, I think there's inconsistencies around language of the Board of Selectmen election and when we meet. In one of them, it says shall meet on the third Monday, I just, having you look at And something that had been discussed.
Is this a motion?
It's, it's more, it may be under the errata, but.
I think, I think it's entitled to a motion to make sure that there's consistent language in those provisions.
Okay, so I'm moving to look at, review, I believe it's 2.3D.
2.3D.
Versus 4.2A, it's around, I don't have it right.
The Board of Selectmen.
The Board of Selectmen.
Just to make sure that the provisions are consistent.
There's inconsistencies around language of when those meetings are.
Happy to do that.
And then in.
Wait, you're making a motion?
Oh, sorry, that's a motion.
Okay. Did you hear that, Tom?
Yep.
Okay. I'll second that. Is there any further discussion on that item? Do you understand this?
I do understand.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries.
And I'm going to make a motion for 4.4C, I believe. Let me just make sure that's right. Four.
By combination of four, off, town offices?
Um, 4.4.
This is the appointment powers? 4.2's, is it 4.2, the Board of Selectmen powers?
Um, let me look here because I, no. It was adding a line about or to the town. It was of concern, and Attorney Baldwin.
Yeah, it's here, which are concerned to the town. This is Advisory Committees.
Sorry, tell me, do, did I have the clause right?
You're pretty close. It's 4.2.
Article.
C.
Four.
4C. It's on page 33 of the document handed out today.
No, no, no.
It's just about.
So say it again.
Membership on boards and commissions. It's called Advisory Committees.
Oh, yes, 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 yes. So my motion is to add the line or the town. So Advisory Committees, Task Force, or, yeah, the motion is to add the, the line or the town.
So any town matters which are concerns of the Board or the town.
It was in the old Charter. I think it said of the town.
I believe that's correct.
And so my motion is to keep in, to, in the spirit of that language, to add the line.
That may be, and, and that may be considered errata, but, but I'll defer to Attorney Mennick on that.
Let's have the specific motion so that there's no question.
Okay.
Yeah, and that's.
And again, it may have been a question of intent, so I wanted to.
It may have come out intentionally.
Right.
I don't think it was an unintentional deletion.
So I, I make the motion to, to add the line or the town in that particular article.
So you make, you have the motion. Is there a second? Tom?
What is this? I'm trying to figure out, what is this again? What are we trying to do here?
I drilled down deep. Yeah.
The language, you want me to read the language, and I'll, so I'll go through the whole section with them?
Advisory Committees, Task Forces, or other similar entities. It's 4C. Such Advisory Committees, Task Forces, or other similar entities as they deem necessary or useful from time to time to study and advise on any town matters which are of concern to the Board or the town. The language is.
Right, and what's the, what's the amendment?
To add the line or the town.
Or the town.
As it was in the former, in the current, as it is in the current Charter.
So we're just adding or for the town?
Or the town.
For the town.
For the, or the town, yes.
Second.
Okay, so any additional discussion on this item? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Under, I'm, I'm moving in Article 4.3, under Powers and Duties, 4.3 of the first select person. Number, third, number 12, I'm making a motion to look at that item with a, I'm sorry, maybe it's, it's item 13? Nope, 12, sorry. To add, the motion is to add a clarifying sentence about the delegation authority, and I'm happy to discuss what, the impetus for that. So the motion, I'm making a motion to add a clarifying sentence to 4.312.
What's the clarifying sentence?
I'm saying there needs to be one. To, to look at that.
If I may, if, if I may add to this, I think it's a very short provision. Have the ability to delegate such authority as may be necessary to the select persons, and I believe the request is to say the willing select persons, or to administrative assistance, et cetera. But that is so that the, the, to clarify that the first select person cannot impose upon a fellow select person an obligation or duty or task to which that person is not really willing or agreeable to performing. Is that, is that correct, Nancy?
Yes, we talked about it in terms of the pension board or the water pollution control. No one wants to feel like they are being made to do something or perhaps violating a Charter statute, so it just adds that language of free will.
So let me hear the word again? That you'd add?
I said it just clear. I, I said.
The word will?
Willing. To add willing.
Right.
Willing.
All right, is this a section that was not addressed, this was a section that was not changed by the commission? This is current language.
Yeah.
So you would add the word willing in 4.0, you're asking the commission to look at adding the word willing in 4.3B12?
Correct.
Got it. Sorry, it took me a minute to figure out.
No, no, it's okay, it was.
I didn't remember doing anything there, that's why I was confused, so.
So, so that's my motion, to add the word willing.
I was actually looking through the minutes from 2006 and the resolutions, and we talked about the WPCA Board of Selectmen. It was interesting. Sometimes you learn something.
No second on that one, really?
So, it's just to add, is it necessary? I guess I'm asking, what does it change? I'm not, not seconding it. I'll second it for discussion purposes. I don't understand.
Basically.
What the goal of it is.
The intention was, and I am in that position, where I was asked to serve on WPCA, and it came to me, and this is not.
Got it, okay.
An indictment.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Of the way it happened. I love these guys, happy to serve. I just think in the effort to modernize and to give the person accepting some free will, because nobody wants to feel like they're not following what's laid out in the Charter, and this just, I think, gives a sense of, it, it clarifies it. It clarifies that it's a willing engagement.
Yep, I got it.
So I don't have any other thing to add to that. If, if I haven't made my case, I don't know what to tell you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not, I'm fine with it. You guys, attorneys, do you see any problem with that?
I, I do not.
There's no legal issue with it.
I mean, they didn't really look at it.
No, I haven't looked at it at all, so.
They didn't look at the WPCA, you know, requirement either.
Yeah, but because, well, again, it's not, we could look at the issue if it comes, oh, yeah. We could look at the issue if the commission has it, because there may be a situation, I can imagine, as a former legislator, where if no one takes a position, you have a statutory obligation to have somebody on the body, how do you, how do you meet your statutory obligation? But again, I don't know enough about this particular issue, because we haven't looked at it. So if it's sent over to the commission, I'm happy to, to look at the issue on their behalf and your behalf.
Okay, that's fine, I have no problem.
I, I think for consideration is fine, but if there's a statutory obligation, like you said, maybe it doesn't get approved. But to actually look at it, I, I understand the ask now, so thank you for that.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously.
I do have two question, well, a question about, the first, be it further resolved?
Yep.
Is it necessary to include language around the town attorney? I'm sorry, I've got one more motion, speaking of town attorney. I'm, I'm moving to have the CRC to add one item, which is to have, to look at the roles and responsibilities of the town attorney and the title. Is it meaningful, well, to, to look at the roles and responsibilities, and again, the point is around, the discussion around the ability of the town attorney to hire outside counsel? If that's.
Which is something that happens now, right?
It's just not codified or clarified.
Right.
And.
That's all, that's, that's my point, right. I get it.
And to consider changing the title from town attorney to town counsel. So my, I guess.
I think only town counsel might get confusing with town counsel.
Yeah, counsel.
So I'm going to make the motion to review, I don't know how it's listed, roles and responsibilities or duties of the town attorney.
Do you want to be more specific and say the, to add the responsibility of assigning outside counsel or something to that effect? Do you want, do you intend to keep it more broadly written?
I intend to keep it more broadly written in its, in this motion.
Can I just also, just while we're, Nancy's looking that up.
This is Section 7.2 of the.
How long does the CRC, again, have to review all of these changes?
30 days, but.
30 days.
It probably will not use 30 days. Yeah, they're not going to be able to use 30 days, yeah.
Okay. All right.
So I, I, the motion is to review the, the duties.
The duties of the town attorney as, under Section 7.2C.
Is that crickets on purpose, Tom?
I'll, I mean, I'll second it. We're discussing it, so I guess I got to second it. I don't have, look, I don't have a problem with codifying the roles and responsibilities. I don't want it to become a distraction for the committee with all else they have to do, to be quite honest. But there's no harm in putting in there that the town attorney is responsible for. I mean, do, let me ask Jim and, and, Steve, do you guys have some standard language that should be, could be used?
Yeah, the.
Before I answer that question, I, I would say that there's already a provision in the Charter that allows for department heads to be, to hire appropriate people within their budget to perform the duties or tasks necessary in their department, and I would suggest that this could be included in that concept, but that's, that's for your discussion and consideration.
And, and there is common language that could be utilized, so.
Right, I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to, I, I don't see why this needs to be changed. We've had, you know, town attorneys for, I don't even know, 100 years or something, maybe longer. They're like a department head, they manage the legal affairs of the town, and they have the authority. So, I, I don't know, I just think that they already have a lot of effort to do. I mean, if, if there's some standard language, I just don't see it, I think it's necessary. We gave them some big stuff to do that I think are more relevant and important than codifying what's already, I think, codified in the Charter. I have nothing further to add.
No. Go ahead.
No, I've done, I made my comments. Do you have anything?
No, that's fine, thanks. No, I'm good.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Opposed. And I have one final motion.
Well, that's not true. 7.2A, again, in Appointment and Qualifications, I move to add after, by the first select person, with and approved by the Board of Selectmen. Under Town Attorney Appointment and Qualifications, the town attorney shall be appointed by the first select person, and my motion is to add and approved by the Board of Selectmen. So now, do you want me to ask my questions here?
Sure.
So under be it further resolved, I'm curious to the attorneys, is it necessary that the Board of Selectmen has to authorize the town attorney and the council to the CRC? We can't go directly to the CRC with these? Like, what's the point of adding that we're authorizing that specific piece?
You're just authorizing us to continue to review. In item 27, you've asked the CRC to do it, but you have two attorneys here, and we're simply asking, we could do it under their authority, under their Aegis. I normally have a provision in, in most approvals to allow the attorneys to continue to do the due diligence and, and errata revisions. Again, all these revisions will be disclosed, they're not, they're not substantive revisions, they're non-substantive revisions.
But I guess what I'm saying, with the, with the current, the way it works, with the process under statute, do we have to authorize?
Statute's silent on this issue.
So, so is it, but is it sort of presumed, I guess?
Well, I think it's useful to authorize. I think it's, it makes lawyers feel more comfortable, know they're authorized to do something. We could always.
But you're not authorized currently?
I'm the attorney to the Charter Commission, I'm acting as outside attorney to you. I can certainly talk to the commission and say, I found these erratas, would you include them in your list? Yes, we could probably do that. It's just that it's an authorization that I don't think is a harmful authorization, and, And I've never had a question, so I don't know how to answer this question, except it's nice to have authorization directly for both the town attorney and counsel attorney or Commission attorney to be able to do this work.
So can I ask it another way? If we don't authorize this, are you still able to continue the work? I'm not looking to derail the work or derail the process, but if we take it out, are you still a
I'm the attorney for the Charter Commission, the Charter Commission has an obligation to take a look at errata. I will advise them on errata, whether this authority is there, I can probably do it. I just don't think it's a bad thing to do, that's all.
Attorney Baldwin, can you weigh in? If we remove that sentence about the authorization, the work would continue, correct? Nope, you're on mute.
We're experiencing operating difficulties, please stand by.
You're on.
You're on.
You're on.
Yay.
I know.
Where I got shut down
Baldwin, are you off now?
I'm on.
Attorney Baldwin, where I, where I, where I got shut down is, if I move to strike and there is support to strike, the first sentence after be it further resolved, that the Board of Selectpersons authorizes the town attorney and counsel to the CRC. What I'm getting at is, can the Board of Selectmen just authorize the CRC? And is it presumed? I don't want to derail the work, I just am wondering if we need that sentence about the Board of Selectmen authorizing the attorney, the town attorney and the CRC counsel? Would the work still continue without the sentence? Would the work
Are you asking?
Does it need to be codified for you to continue your work in your advising role as town counsel or Attorney Mednick's role as counsel to the CRC? Do you need that sentence to be able to continue the work?
In terms of the errata and non-substantive editorial revisions?
All of that.
That are subject to
Well, if there's no CRC, I don't, I mean, there wouldn't, we can't continue work of these
What's the concern, Nancy? What are you trying to achieve?
I'm trying to
Can I ask that?
Well, I'm trying to understand, because I don't actually understand if there are any, what the, what the point of reaffirming the authorization, if we've already, because I wasn't involved, I guess, like practically speaking, I wasn't involved in the hiring of the outside counsel. So I just don't know why I have to authorize it again, if it's presumed, because the contract is between, I'm just not part of the initial contract, so I don't necessarily want to be on the hook for authorizing something.
To answer your question as best that I can, it's to make it abundantly clear that a couple of things are happening. And one is, as Steve has already pointed out on numerous occasions, that any errata, meaning technical mistakes, commas that are wrong, or spellings that are wrong, or anything of the like, are under the purview and the authority of the attorneys to correct. Bringing it to the attention of the CRC and the Board of Selectpersons is simply emphasizing that that is what is intended to happen as this draft document continues to evolve. It's no more than that. And whether or not you have to do this is a question that I would defer to Steve on, but I think it's good practice for everybody to be on the same page and to understand that this is how the process is going to continue to unfold with such minor corrections.
I guess for me, and it leads to the next paragraph, I would like to be able to support the list, the articles, the revisions, et cetera, but I'm not comfortable sending this as a complete resolution with the final be it further resolved. So I guess
Should we, should we just, should we address that next, or should we, are we combining the two?
No, I don't want to combine the two necessarily, except to say, since both seem to be addressing procedure, can we make the case, is there a case to be made collectively where we take up those two items in a separate resolution and that we deal with the recommendations? Because to me, they're separate. The recommendations
So make a motion with respect to the first, be it further resolved, if such a motion is, you know, something that you want, and then we'll move on to the next one?
Well, what I'm asking is something slightly different, which is to say, can we bundle those two and move them to a resolution of a procedural nature and keep the recommendations as its own resolution?
Steve, I don't have a problem with bundling them, if we want one run-on section here instead of two, if that's what you're saying, Nancy?
So I
I don't have a problem with that.
I will make a motion to remove the last two paragraphs to be placed into a separate resolution.
To be combined into one single resolution?
Sorry, to separate them out into their own resolutions.
They are in and of themselves resolutions by the very description that it is further resolved, it is a resolution.
Right, but I, what I'm saying, it's all part of this recommendations, and I am suggesting that we take a vote on the recommendations, we take a vote on the process of retaining or authorizing town counsel, and then we have a resolution that, or not, that ratifies the filing.
Okay, but just to be clear, every single one of these paragraphs, not to mention those which you proposed to add, are each and of themselves separate voting items which you have now addressed, so there's no necessity, I think, to do as you propose. You can simply address them as you have with the paragraphs above them, but I'm sorry if I don't
No, except to say, if I don't support, if I don't support, I support and understand and want to continue, allow the CRC to continue the work with the recommendations that we voted on, understanding that some were rejected that I proposed, and I can live with those. However, I will have to reject the entire thing if these two paragraphs are kept in. So I am trying to avoid, in the spirit of a unanimous vote on the recommendations in the end, I am trying to get to that place. I will not get to that place if it includes the final two paragraphs.
Why?
Because I don't support what they say, and I don't want to have to be
So wait, you don't support that the Board of Selectpersons authorizes the town attorney and counsel to the CRC and Board of Selectpersons to continually review the document for mistakes, which we actually voted on earlier about going through mistakes?
I don't support the language.
And non-other substantive editorial revisions, subject to the approval of the Commission and final review and approval by the Board. So basically, that just lays out the process. What we're doing today, sending it back to the Charter Revision Commission with the attorneys, taking all of the items that we just spent three and a half, three hours discussing to them, then they send it back to us. That's exactly what that first let it be resolved.
As I explained, my concern with language, in theory and practice, it's one thing, and I support the recommendations. I'm not comfortable authorizing counsel, even though in practice
What do you mean, wait, stop right there. What do you mean you're not comfortable?
It's specific, it's specific
The counsel that's been hired to work on our charter?
Which I had nothing to do with the hiring of, so I don't necessarily want to reaffirm in a legal way where I'm held to account for somebody or for a position that I had no say in the hiring of. I have evidence
That would also be that Attorney Baldwin is somebody you had no authority in hiring, do you not want him either?
And I, it is my belief, based on past practice and evidence, that it's not always the town attorney, present and past town attorneys are not always necessarily acting with the entire board in mind. That's what I'm comfortable saying at this table. So what I'm suggesting is we have an opportunity to be unanimous in our vote on the recommendations. And what I'm asking is that we simply carve out these two paragraphs as procedure, and certainly we can get into the bottom paragraph about ratifying the document, but I think that can be a separate discussion. Happy to have it now, I raised the issues yesterday, and what I'm trying to say is, I think it would benefit the town for us to present as a unanimous body, if possible, all of the recommendations that we went through, even though many of the recommendations I made today or the motions I made did not go through. I think it's really that simple.
In an effort to resolve this, we've already voted on each of the items. We voted to pass each of these items to the Charter Revision Commission, correct?
Correct.
So is this belt and suspenders? Do we need to vote on the whole thing, or did we just vote on each of the individual
We did, you're right, we did.
Read on the agenda and say, okay, thank you very much, motion to adjourn.
Except
The last two resolved clauses.
And
Okay, but who, but do we need those?
But that's what I was asking.
Well, wait a minute, let's just be clear, Tom, you're actually, make a very good point. Each item was individually voted on
Twice today.
Correct, wow, Tom, you're on a roll. Okay, all right, bottom line, we voted on each item, each item was sent to the Charter Revision Commission.
That's the question.
Now we are on the last two resolved. I say we just make motions on each of these items, Nancy, you can vote against them, that's fine, but the items still move forward to the Commission, and let's do that. So, the first one
Sorry, for clarity, Attorney Baldwin, can you please confirm that, because we didn't vote on the where, we voted on the change and the whereas, but don't we have to vote on this on an entire, on a resolution in its entirety? This was presented as one resolution.
I think that, I think that we're splitting hairs here. I think that if you want, and maybe this will resolve it for you in your, in your mind, and you'll be comfortable with this, you can add a, therefore be it resolved, that the items above as amended are approved, and as you suggest, it may be unanimous to go back for consideration by the CRC. And then you can address the subsequent be it further resolved paragraphs that you may have issue with, and vote on those separately. Would that take care of it?
Well, it's why I made the original recommendation to parse out as two or three individual resolutions, the first being the whereas and
I think that's what Brenda
Right, but you're saying
Yeah, I think that's what Brenda just did.
No, that was, those were individual items, and what I'm saying is something different.
No, no, what she did was she said, let's take two votes on the individual sections and call it a day.
Because the other items are already sent.
Right, but does that mean then they become separate resolutions?
Yes, with separate votes, we don't take an overall vote. We just take, and the minutes reflect, you voted yes, no, yes, yes, no, on the individual items, and you voted no on these last two items.
But history will show, history will show if we don't parse it out as separate resolutions.
You just parsed it out as separate resolutions, we'll take two separate votes on them, and you can vote no on both of them.
Yeah, so then, are we voting on the first resolution which excludes these two paragraphs?
No, I wouldn't vote, we've already voted on all those, right? So we voted on all the individual items. We took them up as separate items on the agenda, we voted on each individual item. Now we take this next one, we vote on that, the attorney one, that you don't like, we vote on that as a separate item, take the vote, and then we take a vote on the one after that, and you can vote no on that one too.
I appreciate that, but this is
We don't take an overall vote.
But this is one resolution. As it exists, it is one resolution.
If it's one resolution, here's the issue I have with that. I understand what you're saying the way it's written, the minutes have to reflect all the individual votes, and the fact of the matter is, we voted individually on every one of these items.
And my concern is history will show if it is one resolution, and let's just go down the line, and this will never happen, but someone goes to a drawer and pulls out a resolution, and that they see these items, whereas, be it further resolved, and be it further resolved, and it has passed, it is still part of one document. So what I am recommending
If we go to the minute, if you go to the minutes, you'll see that there's individual votes on each of the items.
But minutes aren't attached to the resolution. And so what I am making a motion for the resolution is to strike those two paragraphs and to move them into its own separate resolution.
Okay, this is like going in circles. So what I'm going to do is, I'm going to ask for a motion on each of these last two.
I made a motion.
You made a motion.
I made a motion to strike these two paragraphs.
So I'm not gonna, I don't, I want to keep them in, so I'm gonna, so there's no second to your motion.
You know what, I'd like five minutes, because I think, a break, because I think it's important from a legal perspective to understand
Attorney Mednick needs to hit another, he has a meeting to go to. I mean, you don't want to vote on these two sections, I'm happy to give you that opportunity not to, to not be on the record for voting the last two resolves, which I don't even know if they're voting items, but let's make them into voting items. All the items are sent back to the Commission, and I, just for the record, Nancy, I know you said that some of your items did not make it, the cut, but frankly, I think 95% of the things on this list are from you. So, I mean, but the bottom line is, there's two final resolutions. We've spent a lot of time here, it's five, it's going on three and a half hours.
And I would take three and a half more to get to the point, that there is no world in which I can agree to have a resolution submitted, where it is, in my opinion, a false characterization of what happened. So, I made a motion respectfully
There's no resolution now, there's 27 or more items that were sent
What if we were to, what if we, what if we were to do the follow
Let Baldwin speak. Go ahead, Jim.
What if we, what if Nancy added a resolution before the last two, which simply says what she has said so far, which is the Board of Selectpersons wish to send these items back as voted upon and amended to the CRC for their further consideration? And then, you can vote on that, proposed amendment or new resolution, and then separately address the last two resolutions. Would that, would that take care of it, Nancy?
Thank you.
Yeah, what I was going to suggest is you could break it, break the three resolves into three separate items, A, B, and C, so she can vote for A, she could vote against B, and vote against C.
Right, that's fine. Hence what I said about 10 minutes ago.
Yeah.
I know.
Okay, but again, I think what's, what is missing here is that as a one resolution, if I vote for the whole thing, even if I turn down specific articles or specific clauses, it will still pass. And what I'm saying is, I want these separated out, so that the action items are separate resolutions from the procedure.
I think that's what we just tried to capture, and I'm sorry if we're not doing
I mean, it captures it more the way
If you vote on A, you're on record voting in favor of A. If you vote on B and you go against, you're on record voting against B. If you're on record for C, voting against, you're on record against voting for C. If there's no vote If there's no vote on the overall package, A, B, and C, the record is clear.
Changing your tone won't necessarily change the way I see it, but thank you, that's fine. We can proceed. So Attorney Baldwin, as you suggested, it's fine. I don't even have the language at this point.
Okay, so can I try to streamline this? Okay, let me get this meeting back under control. Attorney Baldwin, do you have language that would reflect...
Excuse me respectfully...
Nancy, Nancy, I am the chair of this board.
May I make a...
I am taking control back of this meeting.
And I would...
So, there is, you said you liked what Mr. Baldwin...
Expressing a point of view does not mean that the meeting is out of control. It means I'm expressing myself.
No, I'm not saying it's out of control. I said I'm taking back control. That does not insinuate that it was out of control. So, there has been a lot of information shared. I am trying to now convey that and get us back on track. Attorney Baldwin mentioned that we could have a motion that said something generally about accepting all the items you just voted in favor or what you didn't vote in favor of, or whatever. Do you have any suggested language, Attorney Baldwin, for that resolution or resolved or be it resolved?
Part A.
Before we go into the other two, be it resolved.
Steve, you want to take a shot at that? I thought I could...
Yeah, I would simply say that the Board of Selectmen resolves to...
Wait a minute, the Board of Selectmen? Okay.
Select persons, I'm sorry, resolves to, to vote for the first whereas clause, part A of the resolution as one separate vote, and then when you get to the second resolution clause at part B...
I think what she was trying to say is like downward refer all the things that happened before, so...
Yeah, and that would be part A, so...
The motion is the select person's what?
Would be voting to approve part A of the resolution, which are constitute, and the numbers are a little off now because we've eliminated some, what were numbers one through 27.
Prove, vote, part A?
Yeah, all the items that were approved in the first portion of the...
How about just items that were approved?
Items that were approved, because there's some on the back here. We added some as well.
Yes, items that were approved, go ahead.
That were approved in part A of the resolution.
Okay.
And that is the first whereas clause, the first be it resolved clause is part A.
Does it have to say be it resolved?
I would say it would be the first be it resolved clause, which is deemed to be part A.
So started with be it resolved, the select persons, okay.
Part A.
All right. And that's a motion, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that motion that was just said, be it resolved, the select persons are voting to approve the items that were approved in part A. So I have a second.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
And to be clear, part A goes up into the first be it resolved.
Okay.
Is that correct?
It's, yeah, whatever numbers, yeah, up to what is now 27, but there's a few added from the, that you had...
Fine, so be it resolved...
Above the first, second be it resolved clause.
Be it further resolved, okay.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Tom?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I said aye.
Yes, thank you. Motion carries, next item, motion for the second be it resolved.
Which is part B.
I'm not going to read the whole thing.
Part B, yeah.
Part B. There's a motion out there, Tom.
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Sorry.
Opposed.
I'm opposed.
Motion carries two to one.
And please, for the record, I'd like this noted in the minutes, that I am not, or I guess for clarification, I am for the recommendations going as the motion that we just made in A.
Yes.
I'm just opposed on the basis of language for B.
Would the third resolution be part C?
Part C.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion to approve what we were going to be called part C that is reflected on the be it resolved. Do I have a second?
Did you want me to put anything in the...
Second.
Did you want me to discuss this at all, or are you...
No.
Okay, fine.
All in favor?
I'd like a discussion, just to say, please, for the record, if I may...
Okay.
That I think it's important for people to understand that I'm...
I thought we talked about it. So, okay, so we have a motion and a second on that the Board of Select Persons ratifies the filing of the draft report to the town clerk on June 20th, 2022, is consistent with the intent of the Board of Select Persons as specifically addressed in its proceedings on August 30th, 2021, clearly articulated too, and understood by the Charter Revision Commission and the public during the first phase of the Charter Revision process, and by the resolution in compliance with the statutory obligations set forth under Connecticut General Statute 7-190B. That's the motion. And second.
For discussion purposes...
Sure.
I'm not supporting this because I think it's a mischaracterization. I don't think it's fair to say that it's a ratification of the proceedings from August 30th. I think there are some procedural issues and violations which we discussed. I have no interest in derailing the good work of the CRC. I know that they have a month of additional hard work in front of them, but my frustration around process, it's not the first time I have felt frustrated by process sitting in this seat generally. I think transparency is something that is aspirational, but to be wholly transparent, even though the intention at the time of Attorney Mednick's hiring, and I understand a contract was in discussion as early as June of 2021, which was in advance of the time that the Board of Selectmen met and were presented to. I think a wholly transparent discussion would have included a discussion of what was allowed to us by state statute. I'm not saying I wouldn't have gotten there anyway, but I think the public was entitled to have that discussion and have that basis for understanding and that education. So on those grounds, I am not supporting this because I think it is a mischaracterization, but I do want to say that I wish the CRC good luck. I want to thank the public for their ongoing participation. I think it's important that the public continue to stay engaged for all the reasons outlined, and I want to thank everybody for taking my issues and my concerns and the items that I brought up and raised, and while I, they may be the lion's share of things that I brought up to light, it's because I have taken a very deep dive, a forensic look, and I think it's, we owe the public nothing less. So I want to thank everybody for engaging in the process from the public.
Thank you, and I would like to say, like as I said yesterday, and I'll think it's just a belief, but I know that this Charter Revision process has been literally the most transparent in the history of the town, with the fact that we have fair TV, we have recordings, we have multiple avenues to reach people, and it was very clear numerous times that what the intent was during this process. So I also too would like to thank the Charter Revision Commission. They have gone above and beyond the call of duty, and they will continue to, as this continues and comes back to the board. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Selectman Flynn?
Motion to adjourn, no kidding. What I want to say is thanks to everybody, thanks to the Charter Revision Commission, also thanks to the two attorneys, and thanks to Brenda and to Nancy, and thank you to the public for having weighed in. Bottom line is, change is difficult. Reviewing the charter should be hard. It's our governing document. So sometimes seeing how the sausage is made, as the, as the old saying goes, it's not pretty. And I think we've had a lot of debate, a lot of dialogue, a lot of frayed nerves at certain points, and we're not at the end of the road yet, but I think that's to be expected in some ways is healthy. So thank you to everybody, and I appreciate all the time and effort.
All right, so we have a motion and a second on the, on the last item. All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Opposed. Nancy, that's two to one. Motion carries. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Did you have something you want to say? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved.
All in favor?
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Go enjoy your daughter, Attorney Baldwin.
All right, thank you.